Everybody, and it's my pleasure to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for October 22nd, 2021. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district, and today we are located on the Tecumseh Territory. This is situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Sherwamak Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Tecumseh and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. The first order of business we have is the adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from June the 18th, 2021. Is there any discussion, Director Schaefer?
I attended that meeting in person and it said I attended it virtually.
Okay, we'll see that correction is made, Director Schaefer. Thank you. Anything else on favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried. That brings us to presentations, and the initial presentation today is from the Shuswop Watershed Council by Chair Paul Domeno, sorry, Shuswop Watershed Council, and please go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you TNRD Board for taking a few minutes to be updated on the Shuswop Watershed Council, of which TNRD is a funding partner. By way of explanation, I'd just like to say I'm sorry that we have not been able to hold this meeting sooner. As it turns out, all of our CSRD board meetings are held on the same days as yours, so we've had some difficulty in scheduling the session, which is long overdue. So if it's already with you, I'm going to go to sharing my screen, and oops, where am I here? You've got to hit that button first, don't I? Do you see that now?
Not yet.
How's that?
Not yet.
Oh, darn. Let me try this again, folks. Share screen. Do I need any help from an administrator here? Do you see it now? Well, I'm hitting the share screen button and nothing seems to be happening.
Good morning, Paul. It's Erin here. Would you like me to try?
Sure. Why don't you try?
Okay, just bear with me.
Okay. Now, joy's a technology. There we go. Great, thank you. We can go on to the next slide. So here's a map showing the Shuswop Watershed. It's quite a large area, draining Adams Lake, Shuswop Lake, Mary Lake, Bama Lake, and all of that water flows through the bottom of the Shuswop Watershed at Chase, where the, at the outlet of Little Shuswop Lake. Next slide, please. The Water Council was established in 2014 as a watershed-based partnership that works in water quality and safe recreation, and our vision is enhanced water quality, supporting human life and ecosystem health, as well as our local economy. Slide. We are made up of a number of organizations, the CSRD, the TNRD, Salmon Arm Sycamore, Adams Lake, Indian Band, RDNO, and three ministries, two ministries from the province, as well as four community representatives, and TR, TNRD is very well represented by mayors Ken Christian and Rod Crowe. The Fraser Basin Council, and you can see the very vital role that they play in running slide programs, is a provincial NGO that provides staff services to the Watershed Council. Slide, please. We, our goals are to maintain and improve water quality in the Shuswop and to serve and function as a go-to source of water quality information, to encourage people to practice safe water-based recreation and to be as well a transparent and collaborative organization, and our work is guided by our five-year plan. I believe strategic, cop reserve strategic plan are available at the TNRD office. Next slide. Our strategic projects are water quality reporting, research, improvement and protection, as well as safe recreation campaigns, zebra and quagga muscle protection, and various types of advocacy to ensure that our water is well represented and protected. Slide. We produce five annual water quality summaries, and this is through our role as basically the host that shares and collaborates all the data for this region. No other organization makes this information as easily accessible as we do, and these reports are also widely available at the TNRD office, as well as the libraries in Chase and Kamloops. Slide. Our research, our fundamental research, was a landmark study that we conducted with researchers at UBC Okanagan to study and determine the levels of inputs and levels of nutrients, especially phosphorus in the Shuswop Watershed. Our results showed us where these nutrients are coming from, and they've also shown that these inputs are trending upward over many years. So these results, this scientific study, which took close to three years, are informing and prioritizing nutrient management to protect our water quality and serve as a guide for future activities. Slide. Last year, we initiated a water quality grant program to build on what we've learned about these nutrients and their impacts on the water, and we've distributed funding to farms in the Salmon Valley for nutrient management projects. So we're now moving into the mitigation phase, which is, to me, the most exciting part of what we're doing, is trying to remediate nutrient issues within our watershed. This grant program was opened up for a second time this past winter and will be opened up this fall for another round of applications. Slide. This is some example of some of the safe recreation programs that we deliver. We help support the PFED loaner station, Kids Don't Float program with in partnership with the Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue Group, and we produce file cards and various newspaper ads and social media posts and print materials that address a number of safety issues. Slide. The, we have 18 PFED loaner stations located around the Shuswop, and this has proven to be quite a hit. People are very happy to have this service provided, and in fact, in some cases, by the end of the year, we find that we actually have more life jackets than we had at the start of the year. So that's kind of interesting. Next slide. Zebra and quagga muscle prevention is a very significant and serious part of our work. We're performing education and outreach to prevent an invasion of zebra and quagga mussels to BC from other parts of Canada and the United States. The results of this type of infestation would be devastating to our watershed and to our local economy, so we're attempting to keep all the lakes and rivers in the Shuswop free of these invasive species. We provide significant financial support to the Columbia Shuswop Invasion Species Society for early detection and monitoring at several sites across the watershed. Next slide. This is an example of the billboard campaign that we've conducted at various entry points to the Shuswop to inform visitors that if you're bringing in a watercraft, it must, you must stop and have it properly inspected, and if there is a risk for invasive species, the boat will be treated. Next slide. Here's some further of our promotional materials in regards to invasive species, and if you're not aware of this app, this is a good app to download onto your farm on your phone, the IS app, which reports, provides you a mechanism to report invasives in BC. Next slide. We also perform an advocacy role, which essentially is meetings and letter writing to senior governments expressing our viewpoints and concerns about water quality and threatening invasive species, and generally to call for more action support and funding from senior agencies. One issue of particular interest is that the federal government's funding of invasive species projects has about an 80% concentration in eastern Canada, with most of it going into the Great Lakes. So we've attempted to try and alert the feds that, hey, we have that problem here, and we'd like to prevent, we'd like more additional funding support to help prevent the spread of these species into our, into our clear lakes. Next slide. This shows our, an example of a typical annual revenue stream. CSRD is the primary funder, but TNRD, and we thank you for your continuing support, is also a funding partner, along with the city of Salmon Arm, Adams Lake, and we have had annual surpluses, and we've attempted to work those off over the past several years. Next slide. This slide shows a typical program and annual budget per our strategic plan and shows the allocation of funding from the various projects that we we support, including water monitoring, protection and improvement initiatives, zebra and quagga muscle prevention, safe recreation, and then we spend a fair amount of money in communications and advocacy and administration. Next slide. And that's basically it, and I'm very happy to take your questions today, and thank you for your, your time and attention.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from Director? Director Watson?
This isn't a question for Paul. It's a question for us. Where does the $53,600 come from that we put into this program?
Yeah, we have a service established a number of years ago, Thompson Watershed. I can't remember the exact name of the service, but it's basically where these funds come from, so we tax specifically each year for this amount and have done for a number of years.
Do we tax specifically for the areas served by this?
There is a defined service area that follows along the, the areas along the Thompson River that were identified when the service was established.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much, Paul, for your presentation. What's the potential impact from the forest fires at the north end of Adams Lake this summer? What's, what is the potential impact next season on the water quality?
Good question. The primary concern initially, when you have a forest fire, is, is with debris flow and flooding and you know, the land mass being eroded and deposited into the, into the watershed. It's difficult to project exactly when and how that will occur. We have another area in our area, Newsome Creek, where the fire occurred back in '09, and we really didn't see the effects of that until about 2017, 2016. It took a number of years before the erosion was finally significant enough that it caused significant problems and affected our our water system treatments. So it's kind of difficult to project exactly what the impacts will be, but we certainly will be monitoring it carefully and keeping an eye on it.
And if I may, as a follow-up, Director Stamer? Yes, thank you, Chair. And as a follow-up, Paul, what, can you give us an update on the, when you were talking about the nutrients in, in the water, and I understand that there's been a I think you've been fertilizing Adams Lake. Can you give us an update on what's going on out there?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you, because it's, it's kind of ironic that while we're looking to limit phosphorus in one part of the watershed, we have one of our funding partners actively involved in adding nutrients into another part of the watershed. We had, we've had several discussions and a very detailed presentation on this by the expert that they hired to, to manage this program. They're attempting to endeavoring to regenerate the salmon spawning grounds in their area, which has been really devastated over the past number of decades. And nutrients, as you all know, is, is food for fish. So it's a balance. When you don't have enough nutrients, the fish don't do well. When you have too much in the way of nutrients, you get algae blooms, and that's really the, the issue and the problem that we're attempting to balance out in our watershed. In the Salmon Arm Bay area, in particular, in the Tappan Bay area, we have an excess of algae, an excess of nutrients, and therefore significant algae blooms have occurred there in the past couple of years. In Adams Lake, it's more of a pristine water base, and in fact, their nutrient levels are really quite low. So they're adding in phosphorus in an effort to regenerate the salmon fishery.
Thank you. Director Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about when it gets to Little Shuswop Lake and starts to go, the river starts to go west. Where is the like, the communication that would deal with that after it leaves Little Shuswop? Because obviously the nutrients and all the other things flow down the river and flow into Kamloops Lake. So is that where the communication comes between Fraser Basin Council and yourselves?
The communication of nutrient levels, is that what you're referring to?
Anything that you're treating within, and little, in, in the Shuswop Lakes. Because obviously, it's going to come down to Kamloops Lake.
Oh, that's right, and I believe that's why TNRD is a funding partner, is you're looking for water source protection. So in terms of, you know, we have your representatives at our table, helping us make decisions on what we do to affect our, the quality of water in our area, and that flows in your direction.
Okay, Director Crowe?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Paul. Nice to see you here. Thanks for your presentation. I have a meeting on Monday afternoon with our federal MP, Mel Arnold, who has been a great advocate on behalf of the Shuswop Watershed Council and, and our water protection. And, and our, our water protection. So I just wanted to let you know and the board know that we'll be meeting with them. I was thinking with Director Stamer when, when he asked about the, and Paul was talking about the nutrient levels up in, in Adams Lake. They, that, that project that they're undertaking right now, is they're anticipating that by introducing phosphorus and the nutrients into there. And that if it, if it helps to. Get them, get more, more fish, bear, fish up in there, that just the natural process of, of the, the stocks dying off. And then that would put the, the nutrients back into the lake on a continuing basis if, if the, the stocks increase. That's the, that's the, the process that they're hoping.
Yeah, it's a temporary effort. It's not an ongoing effort for every year. They're going to be carefully monitoring and measuring. The nutrient levels in that lake and, and also measuring obviously the salmon hatchery. So I'm quite happy to see that they're doing this and, and convinced that they're following the proper science on this as well.
Thank you. And I think Director Stamer had another question.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's been a long time since we've seen dead salmon along the shoreline. So I mean, it's not the most pleasant sight, but at least it shows that we've got, got an increase in stocks. Paul, just a question on those increased phosphorus levels in Tappan and Salmon Arm area on the Salmon Arm. Is that a direct result from septic tanks and that sort of thing and in, in urbanization? Or what is, what is, what is the source of that?
Yeah, good question. This is, this was the subject of our major study with U B C O. We tracked these phosphorus levels all the way up the salmon and the Shushwap rivers and followed them to their sources. And we determined that these sources are agricultural. They're coming from the, the river valley areas where we have dairy farms and other types of farming going on. And so this is why we're endeavoring to provide financial supports to various farmers to improve their control of manure. And other nutrients that they're applying to the land so that we can reduce the inflow of, of these nutrients. But it's primarily agriculture. We did a study a number of years ago, prior to the U B C O study, looking at the city of Salmon Arm sewage treatment plant. We found it was not a source. We looked at houseboats and we found that they were not a significant source. It really is primarily agricultural.
Does anyone else have a question? Okay, Director Christian. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. The city of Kamloops is, I think, the biggest contributor to this service area to L A Director Watson's concerns. But the reason that we do it is it satisfies the requirement in our operating permit for our license. For the Camlips Water System to engage in watershed management. And, you know, I just want to commend Director Deminok and, and his chairing of the Watershed Coalition. Because they really are on top of issues in the Shushwap Watershed that would impact water quality. For Chase, for us in Kamloops, for Savona and beyond. Anyone that would be directly taking water from the South Thompson or the Thompson after the confluence at Kamloops Lake. So I, I think they do good work beyond that. The work that they do with respect to water safety in the Shushwap, I think, is a positive impact for all of our residents. That actually holiday out there and are involved with the recreational aspect of that lake. So I certainly have found a good value for our contributions in terms of the Watershed Council. And, and kudos to Paul for his leadership.
Thanks very much, Director Christian. I've had a keen interest in this subject for several decades. And I'm, I'm very pleased to see the work that you're doing. I, I do have one question and it strikes me that you probably have the answers beforehand. But if there's a concentration, an unacceptably high level of phosphorus, for example, in the Tappan area. That will eventually find its way into the, into the Little Shushwap and, and then eventually the South Thompson and, and Kamloops Lake. Also, if you're adding, but if you're adding phosphorus to Adams Lake, that too is going to find its way eventually to Kamloops Lake. So is there any danger that increasing the phosphorus content in Adams Lake will? Result in an unacceptably high reading in, in the lower reaches?
Yeah, good question, Mr. Chair. Phosphorus is certainly a concern and it's the primary concern we have in our, in our watershed. From a pollutant perspective. Putting it into perspective though, and putting it into context is important. One of the benefits or one of the advantages, I guess, the Shushwap Watershed has is this enormous dilution. And so we have a huge lake that is very deep. So by time the water flows out of Salmon Arm Bay, for example, which is really quite sluggish and slow. As an area of water flow, by time it makes itself up towards sickmus and around the corner and down the lake, it's been diluted a number of times. So the risks of a phosphorus overload coming down the river and suddenly contaminating Kamloops, I think, is very, very, very rare. I don't think that's likely to occur at all. In fact, just by the nature of the dilutions. But we are, this is why we are monitoring phosphorus at a number of stations throughout the watershed to determine these levels. When we see the concentration occur in Salmon Arm, we get algae blooms. And then that has a real negative effect on tourism, as you would imagine, in our local economy. So we're concerned about ensuring that we are mitigating this. And in fact, part of our recent move has been to develop an algae bloom reporting mechanism. So that we're involved with that to let the community know about these blooms, if and when they should occur. I do, I initially had concerns about the Adams Lake. Contribution of phosphorus to the watershed, but having seen their presentation and gone through the science with their consultants, we're, we're quite satisfied that they are. Following a good process and procedure to ensure that they do not over contaminate.
Thanks very much for your reassurance on that. And thanks once again for your presentation. And thank you for what you, for the services that you're providing to us. I think we've matured to the point that we don't have to battle anymore cockamamie schemes to divert the Shushwap River into the Okanagan System.
Yeah.
In order to flush out the Okanagan System. So it's encouraging that we seem to be making some advances on this front. Anyway, thanks once again for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate it and thank you for your continuing participation as a funding partner.
Okay, that takes us now to the Regional Growth Strategy Review twenty twenty-one. And we have a report from the General Manager of Development Services. And here she comes.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. I'm just going to take this off. So I don't have a PowerPoint, but I do have a very brief presentation because I think this is a very important document. It is our highest level plan. It strikes the cooperation between eleven municipalities and ten electoral areas. So what I'm, what I'm seeking is a discussion and some direction. Whether to open the R G S write-up for amendment and budget for that. Or whether to seek consultation, whether we should open it up and if so, to what extent? The board needs at minimum to do that. The board can't or the committee can't recommend to the board just not to do anything and leave it as is. They can't make the decision unilaterally. Under legislation, it requires at least a consultation plan. So I'm, I'm not going to read the whole R G S. I'll just give you a few fundamentals. Again, it's our longest range plan. It's the highest level. It is a coordination on issues regarding growth between rural areas and incorporated areas. It is, it informs official community plans and, but under the legislation, the legislation is extremely complex and controversial. Hence, I attach the U B C M resolution and what led to it. There's been several court cases in the province between within regional districts on regional growth strategies. That our regional growth strategy is, is attached. It's only fourteen pages long. You might recall, most of our reports have a section in them where we review whatever's being proposed against the policies in the regional growth strategy. So it informs our referrals to other agencies, rezonings, certainly O C P amendments. I cannot read it or I won't put you through me reading it. Or I, it's like a, it's a collection of policies. So it's very difficult to summarize in a comprehensive way here today. But I will say, I looked at numerous other regional growth strategies across the province. And a lot of those, so of course Metro Van has one, but Capital Regional District or looking at even Comox Valley. These documents are far more specific. They, they have forays and maps. They'll say a dozen maps where they'll spell out green zones within municipalities, sort of no rezoning areas. It'll spell out urban containment boundaries, cross jurisdictional, within municipalities. Ours is not as deterministic and specific. Granted, all the policy within it, it's very difficult to argue with that policy. It's sound. Also, our municipalities, for the most part, except for maybe Cash Creek and Ashcroft, they're quite distant. So they don't have the same potential conflict that, say Highlands has with the Capital Regional District. Or Victoria, where if the Highlands approves a rezoning for a whole bunch of small lots. What it would do to the traffic and potentially due to, say, Victoria and Sanich. Would have a completely different impact than here in the T N R D. So we are overdue by a few, I'm going to call it a couple of COVID years for a review. And on page five of my report or nineteen of your agenda, I've put together what I would suggest is a good start on a consultation plan. And I seek board or committee direction, I believe the committee, Deanna can direct staff to undertake work. Once we've done that work, the decision would come back to a regular board meeting. So we have enough money in the budget to at least do the consultation now, based on what that consultation tells us. I'll bring it back to the board early in, say, spring of twenty twenty-two. And at that point, the board can make a decision what they'd like to do. At minimum, we have to review it. That's overdue. So any questions?
Director Schaefer.
If, if I read this right, even if we do not make any amendments to this at all, there's a cost to it.
Well, the, the, the cost of the consultation, we can bear that in our regular budget. We would be doing that in-house.
We have to do the consultation.
We have to do the consult, even if the board determines it's good as it is, we have to do the consultation. We have adequate funds for that. However, I, again, I spoke to several regional districts that have regional growth strategies. We've had one in place since two thousand. So even though you're supposed to review it every five years, some regional districts take five years just to do the review, three to five years. And the costs are because they're quite onerous. And even the folks, just to quote somebody who will not be named at the ministry. Cause I asked them what the status was with the proposed amendment, because the province supported the U B C M resolution. But it's not, they haven't begun anything. They said it's easier to get consensus at the U N. Rather than through a regional growth strategy under the local government. Just quote.
That's encouraging.
And we did the last, without mentioning names, the last review we did, because it has to be unanimous, a hundred percent at the board level. And all the municipal councils don't have to be unanimous, but the municipalities have to support it. So you, while you can, might have one counselor at a municipality not support it, once it comes to the board. Well, we had one out of, then it was the twenty-five member board in two thousand thirteen opposed it. And so we had to, that bumped a minor amendment into a major amendment and we had to go to everybody all over again. Seven regional districts, all the municipalities, the province, et cetera.
Director Elliott.
Thank you. Regina, who would be the consult, you would hire a consultant?
So doing the consultation of whether to open it up, we, I feel like we can do that in-house, just that. And we have a budget for the ads and the processes. We would consult and the, the plan is, again, on page nineteen of your agenda, we'd bring that back. And at that point, the board can tell us to go do more consultation or whatever the fallout of that is, whether to proceed with an amendment. And at that point, if we're going to do an amendment, whether it's minor or major, and there's, those are defined, almost all amendments, by the way, are by definition major. And that's defined in the act. So then at that point, we would have to budget money because we certainly do not have the resources in-house to undertake a project like this.
So when I read through the report, I could see a couple of, unfortunately, I forgot my computer this morning. I could see a couple of what I thought were minor amendments. That would probably bring us a little closer to reality of two thousand twenty-one. But I didn't see that we needed a major thing. So that's just my opinion.
So I actually reached out to the officer at the ministry who sort of oversees a regional growth strategies. And the province does have the power to tell a regional district, like they did in Comox Valley, you must do a regional growth strategy. Cause it was conflicts between, like the municipalities are quite close, Courtney Comox, Cumberland. So they certainly haven't told us that, but I asked if we could just clean up some of the stats. Cause they are a bit dated, especially in the sort of context statement. And he said, absolutely not. We'd have to, to make any changes, we would have to bump it into an amendment process and go through the full process.
Director Quinn.
Thank you. So if I'm reading this and hearing you right, we have to do something to satisfy the ministry.
Yep.
But is the regional growth strategy as it stands now serving us well? And if that's the case, I would suggest we go and do the minimum. If it's not serving us well, then I guess we'd have to go into it wholeheartedly.
So unlike other regional districts, I don't see our regional district launching any legal action on the basis of the regional growth strategy. Between rural areas and municipalities. But it doesn't have that kind of teeth in it. So. And I sort of went out on a limb on the first page of the report and I said, if we're going to do an amendment. For, for the work that it is. It should be addressing very real fundamental changes. And it would, and it should be more onerous. There's no point in making it less onerous. It doesn't have, it doesn't have the same deterministic. I don't know, policy in it, say, say if this, this, this policy could have an urban containment boundary. That within the city of Kamloops. Now I know the Kamloops and their O C P have an urban containment boundary, but they're free to change that without coming to the board. And the, I don't think in our region is warranted. So if there's going to be changes, I guess I don't want to see it watered down more. We definitely look at that document every time we get a, an, an application that comes to the board. And we review all municipal official community plans against it. And they come to the board. That's not, that's not delegated to the staff. It requires a resolution of board. And so in that, there's a kind of cooperation. And I mean, there's nothing wrong with having a document that sort of creates an understanding. That's the purpose of regional districts. In a, in the county structure across the rest of Canada, that isn't in legislation. So you can have more of a, say, a. Competition for perhaps industrial uses. Between a county and a municipality.
Director Singh.
Director Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Trigillus. Um, so, uh, I, I'm thinking to myself like every, um, I don't, you know. Planning plans should be done every five or ten years. I mean, that's sort of like the best practice and, and, and as things are. Changing so quickly, a- and sometimes like the fate of agricultural land, uh. The rural outflow to urban areas, and trying to keep rural areas and smaller communities with, with population bases that actually, you know, keep them whole. Um, there's a whole bunch of things that I think that would be very useful to kind of, uh, look at in context of, of, of a, a larger planning process. And so, um, I just named a few, but there's a whole bunch of other ones. Um, I guess the question that I would have is, where would the budget, if we, if we went to five hundred thousand dollars at, at the extreme end. Um, where would a budget like that come from? Would we have to tax for it? Is there money in a reserve somewhere? I just, not money in the actual planning budget. But is, is he really able to actually fund that through another source that currently exists? Or do we have to actually go and, you know, tax for it? What's the, what's the strategy?
So some regional districts have a staff, one or more staff allocated only to a regional growth strategy. We do it off the corner of our desks. Uh, I believe some, and Doug can correct me. I believe some regional districts have a separate line item, it's like a service, like a fire protection or what have you. They have a separate line item on taxes for the R G S as a service. We don't have that. We do it off our regular planning budget. I don't know if we, I don't, we have some money in reserves, we certainly have enough in our budget to do the preliminary consultation. So when I come back next year, if it is the case that the board opts to open it right up and make changes. Um, then we'll see what we have in our reserves next year. I'm not sure what we have. We, I, we don't have a planning reserve, but we do have carryovers year to year. We don't have, like, we have a library reserve and a building service reserve, we don't have a planning service reserve.
I mean, I guess I would, um, I would advocate in a way, initially, my thought is that we should actually have a way of funding a five to ten-year, every five, ten-year planning process, that's, that's, that's a larger process. If you have to do as a service, that would make sense, because I think that that, it really doesn't, a, a, a service not have current. Uh, you know, conversations around planning in the region, because things are changing so quickly. So there's all pressure again on, on agricultural land, we have to kind of split that one out. Obviously, we litigated the board and we have stood votes quite often on that. Um, you know, what's happening with, you know, the rural outflow to urban areas, I mean, that's a big issue for the region to kind of grapple with, right? So I mean, the, again, there's many other ones that I think are important. So you're having been involved with this, on a municipal side around, you know, every ten-year planning processes, there, there, there. Maybe something's on change, but they're immensely, immensely valuable, even engage people. Uh, our citizens, our, our, our constituents in the region. So I, I feel like it should be something that we looked at in terms of how we would do that.
Uh, Director Elliott.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question about the O C Ps. If we decided to open one of the O C Ps for some changes. How would that affect the regional growth strategy? Would it have to be a major amendment then to the, uh, regional growth strategy? Or could we just open the one, let's say, one of the O C Ps?
Absolutely, you could open one of the O C Ps, but it would have to be tested against. When we, when it's rewritten and the change would have to be tested against the consistency rule with the regional growth strategy.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Director Singh?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch a bit about this, um, issue around the unanimous consent in the board. I, I do think that's a really important, I remember that I was on the board then, but I remember my council coming back grumbling around, you know. That one person who will remain nameless, um, who voted against the thing at, at the board level, and I didn't know much about it at that time. But I, I can tell you, it's a real pain in the butt when that happens, right? So I mean, I, I, I think that we have to, um, you know, continue the advocacy to the, the province is actually warm to it. We haven't just got to it in terms of, they're proud of this yet, is there an opportunity when the, when the chair goes to the regional district meeting in Victoria every year? And, you know, talks to all the other R Ds about what's happening, you know, whether that can be really brought up on, on the list? Because it does hamper, uh, unanimous vote is very challenging to get on many things, right? That are, that are a little more heavy, so yeah, I, I really believe that's important as well.
Thank you, Director Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'd like to see us, you know, if you look at these amendments and a major amendment. That pretty well looks after a lot of the problems we've had. We just had a meeting, uh, that came up and told us about our water systems. The cost of water system, urban sprawl, that's all going to be covered, and this is becoming a major. As we're developing more and more on the interior here. Uh, I think we should really look at it, protecting our water systems, we've got major. So I'd like to see if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it properly and go right into it. Because, uh, we're getting more and more urban sprawl and looking after the lakes, the rivers, everything else within the area. So I'd like to see us do a proper one if we're gonna do one.
Right. So I guess I'm looking for direction to commence a consultation plan through the winter, spring.
Yep, that recommendations before is moved by, uh, Director Laird. Second, moving second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Is anyone opposed? I see no one opposed. Speaking of unanimous, unanimity, Mrs. Dilke, there you go. Thanks ever so much for your presentation and for, and for your efforts in keeping us abreast of these situations. We have a, a presentation by the General Manager of Corporate and Legislative Services. Uh, with respect to board and committee meeting and public hearing review. Uh, and an update on the legislation and board procedure bylaw, I would imagine we're going to hear first for some length from, uh, Ms. Campbell, is that right?
I will try and keep it brief. Thank you, Chair Gillis. So I just wanted to provide the committee of the whole with some recent updates, um, to the legislation, which impacts electronic meetings. And then just go over a review of the, um, the board meeting schedule, propose some proposed, uh, changes to some of the board meeting, uh, schedules for the twenty twenty-two year. I just saw a legislation, um, update, so the previous authority to hold electronic meetings during COVID. Was under the COVID, uh, Related Measures Act, so that was Ministerial Order one nine two. And that expired, um, at the end of September. And so amended legislation was brought in through the Municipal Affairs Statutory Amendments Act, so it's Bill, uh, ten. And that came into force on September twenty-ninth. So, um, those amendments updated the community charter for municipalities and updated, um, the Local Government Act for regional districts. So under these new provisions, electronic, um, regular and electronic regular and committee meetings uh, will be permitted only if they are authorized by, um, a procedure bylaw. Um, and the amended legislation also allows local governments now to hold, uh, public hearings. And there, there doesn't need to be any changes to the procedure bylaw to allow that, we're just able to do that at, um, at the board's discretion. And just a reminder that, uh, special board meetings are always able to be held electronically, that's in the legislation already. So just, uh, going over the difference between electronic meetings and electronic participation. So an electronic meeting, um, if authorized by a board procedure bylaw, are meetings where all members of a council or board may participate electronically. And then electronic participation, again, if authorized by a procedure bylaw, allows for a hybrid meeting. Where some members of a council or board, um, may attend in person and others may attend electronically. Um, so currently, our board procedure bylaw does allow, um, for electronic, um, participation. I'm gonna actually turn it over to C E O Hill de Brand, just because, um, I feel that this conversation's a bit related to um, updates that he has with our upcoming, um, boardroom.
Great, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Um, I had a chance to talk to a few of you this morning as you were coming in and provided you just the copy that you'll see on the screen right now. Um, so we talked yesterday and Director Singh brought up the, the fact about safety and a COVID plan with our, with our newly refreshed boardroom, which we're hoping to be in for the inaugural meeting on November fourth. Um, this is the, the configuration of what it looks like, so that it does hold all twenty-six of, of you, including staff along the same table that we normally had, and then the blue area down below is where we would have media, uh, and or public as well. So going into November fourth, given that, uh, we don't have availability in this room anymore, our only other option would be going to rent something else. Um, externally, uh, what we thought as a, a COVID plan, we could, the yellow seats that you see there would rec- uh, would allow nineteen board members to be in there in a, in a safe way, based on, uh, spacing and wearing masks. Seven board members would still need to potentially zoom. There would only be three staff in there, and then you'll see that down in the blue part on the bottom, where it would be the recording secretary, secretary, Ms. Campbell, myself. Um, other staff that maybe are presenting could simply be outside the room and come into the podium for, for presentations, but still have availability to, to zoom in from anywhere in the building. Um, and then, of course, public and media would also need to either zoom or call in as well and listen to the meetings. But, uh, masks must be worn and, uh, we need to maintain safe distances, of course. So, um, given that we're talking about this, we thought it would be timely just to can kind of share what, uh, what our plan is for November fourth. And then hopefully going forward, we'll be able to transition into, uh, you know, the full setup. Just a couple of other quick points, um, the, the chair table or the, where the chair sits at the top, um, is actually elevated. But the other four tables that kind of go across, um, are not. Um, the room, I, I looked at it this morning when I was there, the carpet's in, the paint's done. So we're just working on now getting the electronics back in and getting the new tables set up, uh, early next week. So we feel like we're gonna be, um, set to go for November fourth, and, uh, what we'll do is send out a communication to the board through Katie. Just to find out who, uh, is going to zoom into the meeting and who, uh, is not. Unfortunately, this will be just the way we need to do it for the time being, uh, unless the board has, uh, other ideas and wanting to move to a facility where everybody could be, uh, in the same room. So I'm not sure if there's any questions or not on that particularly, but, uh, certainly take those now.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first off, I was mentioning to, uh, C E O Hildebrandt off camera that I would have preferred the Hollywood Squares configuration, but we weren't entirely sure how that would go. But I had a couple of questions, uh, if we can put that, that, um, uh, picture back up, if we could, please. On the configuration of the, of that, the one, one thing, one, one point is that the people in the middle are not going to be able to see the people behind them, so that's an issue. And the other issue is where are the TVs going to be? So that we can have, you know, so we're not having a swivel on the back of our head trying to see what the presentations are like. So maybe Mr. Hildebrand could, uh, explain to us where the TVs are gonna be?
Sure, good question, and, um, Hollywood Squares would be interesting until somebody fell off the top row, um, which was always a concern. Uh, so what we did was we adjusted our projectors, as you remember, a few months ago, we updated those, they were seven or eight-year-old projectors. We have new ones in there now, uh, and we used to project on the, on the window behind where the chair sat, and now it's gonna be on either side. Uh, so as you sit on either side of that configuration, you're gonna see the, the projector on the wall in front of you. Um, so, and it's, uh, whi- which still allows light to come in that window. And we have projectors now that you'll actually be able to see clearly, uh, even though there's light in the room. As far as staff, I'm sorry, as far as other directors behind you, given the space we have, uh, and the conversation we had about creating a new boardroom. This is the best choice we had to, uh, to make this work.
Sorry, Director Sinclair.
Thank you, Chair Gillis, uh, thank you, Mr. Hildebrand for the presentation on, uh, the new configuration. So, uh, I'm looking at this diagram and under COVID nineteen requirements, it says masks must be worn. So I'm just wondering if, um, if the board is in agreement with that. Cause I'm looking around the room and not everybody's wearing a mask. So if, if this is contingent upon for COVID nineteen safety, everyone wearing a mask. Um, I'd like to know that my colleagues are also gonna be wearing masks in public meetings. Thanks.
Great, that's a fair question, and, um, certainly from our understanding in a room setting is this, we were told that if you're speaking, eating or drinking, you could take your mask off, but should be wearing it, to your point, um, if you're in the meeting. We will double check prior to, to November fourth, if anything has changed and communicate that out to the board. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Director Quinn.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, through to Mr. Hildebrand, and these are specific questions for November fourth and November seventeenth or eighteenth. Uh, if we're gonna have, in the new boardroom, there'll be some, uh, directors not there, that they will be online or whatever it is we're calling it. Uh, we make provisions if there's need for an election, so that there's a secret ballot to those people.
I, yes, we have made that provision, and, uh, we've got electronic, uh, way to set that up and make sure it's set for the inaugural meeting.
Uh, just as a sort of a supplementary to that, Mr. Hildebrand, and their votes will remain sacred.
That's true.
Chair Gillis, I can comment on that, we use this voting system, um, for some of our committee elections recently, and it, um, it's, it's a secret ballot.
Good, thank you. Uh, Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, to staff, were there any changes to the ventilation system, uh, in these improvements?
Uh, Director Stamer, we are working on the ventilation system, I know that there has been changes and there's continued changes coming with, uh, parts that are on the way. So we, we feel it's safe currently, but there is upgrades that are happening going forward.
Thank you, Director Blackwell.
Yeah, just, uh, further, um, somewhat related to Steve's comment, he thought my question on that one. Um, as far as who attends in person versus who attends in Zoom, um, will there be a rotation setup? Will it be first come, first served? How's that gonna work?
Yeah, that's something that we've discussed, but would of course like feedback from the board, so I'm not sure if now's the time. I, usually in the last number of months, there has been approximately, you know, six to eight or six to ten people zooming in. Uh, so I don't think it's unreasonable, but, uh, certainly we need to have that discussion as a board and find out what's, uh, makes sense.
Uh, thank you, Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I mentioned a little bit yesterday, but I, I think at some point we gotta have a cap as to how many meetings members can attend electronically, or directors can attend electronically. So that we guarantee that they're at least going to be, have a physical presence here, um, at some point during the year. And, and I, I don't know what that number is, but I think it should be considered and looked at, that you have to be in, in person twenty-five percent of the year or X amount of meetings per year, so at least, uh, we're still getting that commitment of the director to be here, uh, in person at some point throughout the year.
I, I think that's critical, and I know that we've had that discussion with, uh, Chair Gillis, and I think, uh, Ms. Campbell also has some comments about what's currently in our, our bylaw.
Yeah, so there, um, there is some criteria around participating, um, electronically in that, um. If I recall correctly, is that, first of all, the chair has to approve it, or vice chair in the chair's absence, um, the corporate officer has to be notified about it. And it has to be in exceptional circumstances, and we also have to have the technology to allow for it. So, um, exceptional circumstances, I would say, is what we're in right now. Um, unfortunately, we don't have a boardroom big enough to accommodate, uh, the health and safety regulations of, um, the COVID, um, COVID measures. So I think we will have to allow, um, we will have to allow some board members to participate electronically. But if, um, the board would like to see changes to the procedure bylaw in the future, that is a little more, um, uh, strict or, or create different cri- like additional criteria around the number of meetings, things like that, then absolutely. And I'll get to that later in the presentation, we are gonna be bringing a more fulsome report on some proposed changes to the board procedure bylaw at the December Committee of the Whole Meeting, so that might be the, the opportunity to talk about, um, the electronic participation again.
Thank you, and, and I mean, as partly why I mentioned it too, is we all kind of know each other here, but in a year from now, we could have a fifty percent new board. And we have the way it's set up, or if we set it up incorrectly, that board member, we may never see them. And so anyways, I, that's, that's, that'll for comment, thank you.
Thanks, Director Riley. Director Watson.
I just about, um, participation, um, electronically. We still have to, um, deal with the elephant in the room. Someone who cannot or will not be vaccinated. So what are we gonna do there?
Uh, I don't know who's gonna address that, are you gonna tackle that one, uh, Mr. Hildebrand?
Uh, I'd rather not, but I will. Um, I, I know that we had a fulson discussion yesterday, and it seemed like, um, that's the way the board was leaning. I guess that'll be up to the board to decide on what policy they may want to put in place for, uh, the board going forward. Um, and then to Director O'Reilly's points, then have the criteria to, to support that with the, with the appropriate structure. It's my personal opinion that, um, coming in, I know, hearing from staff in the, in the facility, that, uh, board members come in. They, the preference would be to have everybody, uh, vaccinated, um, for their safety and that of volunteers. And I, I, I had conversations with some of the board members yesterday, and they felt it was, uh, we need to lead by example. If, uh, if we wanna be the board who we are, we wanna need to lead by example when it comes to vaccinations, so that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of comments about mask wearing. Because of my lung capacity, I cannot wear a mask for any length of time. And then that's why my vaccination is up to date. And, um, and I do try, but I can't sit here for four hours with a mask on or even twenty-five minutes. So, um, to, uh, Director Sinclair's question. Um, also the fact that I, I do believe that there are other opportunities of, especially for municipalities, if they have someone who doesn't get vaccinated, they have a way of sending someone else from their council. So the fact that we all need to be vaccinated is my opinion.
Thank you. Um, there, I think I missed, uh, Director Stamer.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree with what, what, uh, Director Riley is, Riley saying, but I don't, I think there's still some uncertainties out there. And I don't think we should be necessarily penalizing somebody, um, by forcing anybody on the board to be here in person. They may, they could have autoimmune, um, issues, a bunch of different things. I would think more along the lines for the next year or so, after we get, try to get through this, is as long as that director is participating. If the person isn't participating electronically or in person, then we can be looking at through the bylaws. But I think right now, if, uh, if a director chooses for the next time for, you know, for the next while to only be, um, participating electronically, I don't think we should hold it against he or she, quite, quite frankly. And then after we get through the next election, we can figure out exactly how, you know, how we're gonna work this out. I agree that everyone should be vaccinated, but there's people out there that have a legitimate reason why they don't. And in a lot of cases, they're hunkering it down, and they're not going out in the public, and they're, they're, they're staying at home. So I don't see we should be penalizing them if they feel more comfortable being at home for a meeting than coming in here in person.
Thank you, Director Singh.
Thank you, Chair Gillis. This is thought on the, um, people meeting by, you can come in by Zoom. Um, you know, if you have enough people who volunteer, that's great. If you don't, then just have staff randomly decide. I mean, I think we should probably have a bit of a, uh, arms length to actually comes and goes beyond folks who volunteer to come and go. And that would be my thought about that, rather than just kind of having a, you know, discussion on the board as to who gets to be off the island for the, for the meeting or whatever, right? So, yeah.
Uh, Director Quinn, then Director Rice.
Just a, 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 a comment. Um, it, we can probably work for this for a year, but before they go to the election next year, all those procedures and that should be clear to anybody who wants to run. If you choose to run, you, you, this is what the process is. Um, and we really should have that cleared in place, rather than have a bunch of new people show up and then, oh, I gotta do all this. Um, it's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rice.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I echo Director Stamer's comments and stuff. As, uh, Deanna so eloquently put it, it, this is exceptional circumstances right now until we get past exceptional circumstances. I don't think these decisions should be discussed and, uh, and, uh, the way we're doing it right now, I think is the best we can do. And, uh, then once we get passed on the other side of this and before the election, as Director Quinn pointed out, then we can put down and li- look at those bylaws and maybe, uh, tweak them a bit.
Thank you, Director Roden.
Thank you, Chair Gillis. Um, math is not my strong point, as anyone who knows me well will tell you. But looking at the four tables across the center, the one at the front mark three where the chair will be sitting, that's twenty-seven spaces. So I'm assuming that this is a temporary thing to fit in with interior health regulations about half capacity or distancing or something. And that at some point, when things are back to normal, quote unquote, we will have all twenty-six directors on those tables. And I'm assuming the six at the back will be similar to what we had before where that's where senior staff sat.
You're exactly correct. And, um, so there's twenty-seven because the recording secretary was, the plan was to have the recording secretary up front where the chairs, so that they could see the entire board, and then staff would be across the back like you suggested. Um, so that was the plan, that that would be our permanent solution, and this is our, our COVID nineteen solution.
So just as a follow-up, hopefully by this time next year, I know we've been saying this for nearly two years now, but by this time next year, i.e. the next election, we should hopefully be back to a point where who's going to be off the island, as Director Singh said, for a particular meeting will be a moot point because we won't need to do it anymore.
That would be my expectation. Yeah.
Thank you, Director Brown.
Um, I don't see this ending in one year from now. So I don't think this is going to be a plan that is going to work through the next election. This room, this room, the proposed room, is just not adequate for our needs. And, and I would hope that in that next year, we could look at a bigger setting, um, because this isn't going to work. And we don't know that COVID is gonna stop next year.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, but I'm just looking at the configuration. And again, the one thing I don't like personally on that is I don't like looking at the back of somebody's head or vice versa in this thing. And I'm just wondering if, if we have to do this, is there a possibility? No, I'm just serious. I mean, it's really difficult, not just to read people, but just as a communication point, I would prefer the circle. And if we can't have the circle, is it possible to have staff in the middle? So we can, you know, throw stuff at them and then have us on the peripheral. No, but seriously, would that be a better idea of having staff in the center? And then at least we can all be around so we can all see each other and let staff be in the, in the, in the, uh, in the cage or whatever? Is that a possibility? And then at least we're still on the outside? Uh, just a thought.
Uh, your approach to that and the words you were using make me wonder, but I would think that, um, I, I would be okay. I would be, I'd be fine with that, and we certainly could, uh, make that work. Our, this configuration's arriving next week, and we will, we'll play with that and make it work because the numbers do work that way or could work that way.
Thank you. Uh, Director Polderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this seating arrangement does not allow for any growth of a future board member?
That's, that's, uh, correct. Our, our building's made of cement, so we would have to, uh, do something completely different. So, so we certainly would have to look at a new space because we just, we just couldn't house or just make that work in that, uh, that space.
So, yes, I, I'm, um, pretty concerned about that too, Mr. Hildebrand. But, um, this doesn't really seem to be much of a long-term solution. It seems to be a short-term solution, and I'm kind of suspicious that if we had had any idea how long we were going to be plagued by this pandemic, then maybe the board would have had a little different attitude towards, uh, a completely new boardroom, as we discussed several months ago. Because that it, uh, this is, it's all we can do for the time being. I'm, I'm prepared to agree with that, but it's certainly not satisfactory on a long-term basis. So I'd wonder if maybe shortly down the road, we hadn't better revisit the question of a completely new boardroom. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that would certainly be my preference. Director Elliot.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I'm thinking along the lines of Area J, and you have Tobiano and Savona, who are both in a position right now to become small municipalities if they want to, which would add two more people to this board. So if you're looking at talking about a bigger boardroom, then you better be thinking about it now in case they do that in the next two or three years.
Yeah, I think that was exactly the concern here, that it's inevitable that the book, this, the number of members on this board is going to increase. And, uh, and we've got nowhere to put them. So I, I don't know what the next meeting is that we should bring that one up. Uh, Mr. Hildebrand, have you got a suggestion when that topic should come back for the board?
Um, we, we can certainly look at it again, but I get, with all due respect, that's exactly where we started a year ago, uh, with kind of coming up with a new boardroom. I just, the decision was made to do something different in our current space. So we will certainly look at it again and try to find some, some opportunities that make it work.
Thank you. Um, I think that brings us then to, uh, the report from the General Manager of Development Services with respect to the allowance for shipping containers.
Chair Gillis, no, I'm not done yet.
Sorry?
Sorry, guys. No, I still have, I still have, um, have a more of my presentation to get.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought that was concluded. Okay.
Coming back to electronic meetings, so we already are aware now, we, um, our board procedure bylaw does allow for electronic participation, which will continue on for the foreseeable future, especially in our, um, revamped, uh, boardroom. But turning back to fully electronic, um, meetings, if the board does wish to have the option of holding electronic meetings, then the board procedure bylaw will need to be amended. Um, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, um, is really encouraging local governments to proactively consider whether, um, there are circumstances where electronic meetings may be beneficial for the community. Um, and we've heard from many local governments that, um, there are advantages and advantages of enhanced transparency and accessibility that electronic meetings, um, offer their residents. So in terms of next steps, um, unless Committee of the Whole directs otherwise, um, staff will bring a more fulsome, um, report to the next, uh, committee of the whole in December, proposing some changes to the board procedure bylaw, which may include, um, electronic meeting provisions and, um, seek additional feedback from the Committee of the Whole on some additional, um, amendments. For example, um, we now have the alternate directors policy, which allows alternate directors to attend committee meetings. But that's not allowed for in the board procedure bylaw, so we'll need to make that change. Uh, potentially look at some changes around, um, some, um, uh, more detailed guidelines around, uh, delegation requests and potentially any other, um, uh, changes that the board would like to see of the board procedure bylaw. Switching gears. So staff felt it was, uh, timely to do a review of, um, the board meeting, um, schedules. I don't think this has been done for, for some time. I know going back to two thousand and sixteen, I believe was the last time the board, um, met, uh, two times, uh, per month. I don't believe it was for the entire year when I looked back. Um, I think it was two times a month for six months, um, out of the year. And you would have seen this, um, slide from CEO Hildebrand, um, that he presented a few meetings ago. So what we're proposing for the regular board meetings is two meetings per month, with the exception of, um, the holiday season months, so December and January, um, as well as the, the summer months, just because those tend to be busy with staff, um, taking time off for holidays, the board as well. And if we have another summer like we did, we might be pulled away into the ELC. And then while we were looking at, uh, regular meetings, we thought we would just, um, see if Committee of the Whole, the board, um, had any, um, wanted to see any changes to when we hold our closed meetings. So right now, our closed meetings, um, currently take place immediately after, uh, the regular meeting, which, um, doesn't have a designated start time. So staff are just looking, um, for any input or feedback from Committee in the whole, from Committee of the Whole, and whether or not you'd like to see, um, any changes. I guess from a staff's perspective, the main concern, and we've, we've heard this from members of the public, is that, um, we don't have, um, a designated start time. So, um, if the board does have a closed meeting and then goes back into the regular meeting, oftentimes that creates logistical challenges in letting the public or media know that we've moved back into, back into a regular meeting. So if we do keep the closed meeting the same where it occurs at some time at the end of the regular meeting, staff would just ask that the board, um, try and refrain from going back into an open meeting unless it's absolutely necessary, just for public, um, accessibility and transparency. Um, if there is a matter in the closed meeting that does need to be brought forward to an open meeting, that can happen at the next regular open meeting. And with the increased frequency of regular meetings, there shouldn't be, um, too much time, uh, time between that. But there is also the option of having, um, the closed meeting perhaps at a designated, uh, time in the morning or early afternoon right before the board meeting, and this really helps for, um, scheduling. Now, we don't often have presenters or, uh, external attendees at our closed meetings, but sometimes we do. And having it at an undetermined time, um, after the regular meeting, it definitely creates some scheduling challenges. So potentially an option might be having the closed meeting start at maybe eleven, um, to maybe schedule it eleven to one. We could get, um, ensure that the board gets lunch over that time, um, deal with the closed meeting matters, and then have the, the regular meeting, um, in the afternoon. And all, once I go through all this, I'll, I'll get some, um, take some questions and, and feedback from everybody. So the same thing for public hearings, um, just looking to see if, um, there's any changes that, uh, the board may wish to see to when we hold, um, our, our public hearings. So it's similar to closed meetings, they're not, um, they're only held when required. And currently they start at the same time as the regular board meeting. And so this definitely creates a problem because we're not actually meeting our notice requirements, um, for our regular meetings. Because when we hold a public hearing at one thirty, it shifts the time of our regular meeting to an undetermined, uh, time. That also creates scheduling challenges for other attendees to our regular meeting, um, and delegations. So again, if the Committee of the Whole wants to see any changes to when we hold their public hearings, they don't need to be at a designated start time. We just were required to provide notice of the time and place of where our public hearings are. But, um, do we wanna have, perhaps have them, uh, at a designated time in the morning, um, at a designated time in the evening, on another day in time, keep it the same? The other thing to remember is that public hearings, uh, can be delegated, so not all board members need to be at a public hearing. We saw an example of that with the North Thompson OCP, where that was delegated to the two electoral area directors. Um, but just a reminder that whenever we do delegate a public hearing like that to another, um, into another community and to the electoral area directors, that it requires just a lot of coordination and scheduling, um, with staff. And our committee meetings, so, um, I'm not sure there's any room to make changes to our, our current, uh, committee meeting schedule. Um, so basically our, our committees, most of our committees meet, uh, twice a year, with the exception of the invasive, uh, plants committee and the policy review committee, which has been meeting more frequently. And this year, we adjusted the Committee of the Whole meetings from, I believe, three to five. Um, and we propose to, to do that again for twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's a lot of finagling that goes into putting the board, uh, calendar together because our member municipalities have their own council and committee meetings, uh, and obligations to meet. So I, I don't know if there's room, um, to shift, uh, the times of, um, and the days of committee meetings. But if we were to make some changes to, um, when we have our closed meetings and public hearings, and we may need to, to move some things around a bit. And that's just, any, any questions, input, suggestions?
Uh, Director Stamer, I think, had the first one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points from, from a personal perspective is that, uh, personally, I don't like meetings scattered all over the place. I like them stacked. Um, as for the closed, I think it's important, the way we've been doing it lately, I think is fairly effective in as much as if we have a specific closed meeting that's gonna be on a legal, um, item, and we're gonna have to deal with it. You know, I, I think you're right, eleven o'clock type of meeting works well, especially if we're gonna move into a regular, regular meeting. And at the same time, still having the, the flexibility if something comes up in the regular meeting that we can still have closed afterwards. And, and I, I appreciate what you're saying after the fact is that really we're just going back into open because we have to, but we're not really gonna be doing much business. So that's fair to the, for the public. As for the public hearings, I think we should continue to do them the same way they are. I mean, yes, there's an expectation that there's, the public hearings are gonna take a little bit longer if we're starting at one thirty, but then at least it's all concise and it's all at one time. I would hate to have a public hearing at eleven o'clock in the morning, and then the regular meeting at one thirty, and then another meeting over here. I don't like having a whole bunch of meetings scattered all over the place. I'd rather stack them as much as we can. And I think if we're gonna be going forward with our electronic, uh, meetings, like even the district, in barrier, we're looking at doing a substantial upgrade of between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars, so that we're gonna be, allow our residents to be able to zoom in on everything that we're doing and having a two-way conversation at the same time. So that there's no reason why if somebody wants to, uh, participate, there's not a reason for them not to be able to either be here in person. If there's a limiting because of COVID, then we can certainly do it on Zoom. But I certainly don't wanna have it any more fragmented than it is. Thank you.
Director Sam, we're just on your last point. Um, I should have pointed out that we will continue to ensure that the public, um, has access to our meetings electronically. Uh, I don't know if we're, I'm working with IT right now. Um, we may not be using Zoom for that. But the, um, the public and the media will still continue, um, to be able to participate electronically, have it live streamed. We also post the recording on our website and on our YouTube channel as well.
If I may, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we thought it was important at our municipality level to make sure that we have that two, two-way dialogue. I mean, it was cheaper for us to just do a streaming process than allowing, uh, residents to be involved in the meeting, similar to what we're having right now. I personally thought it was important for us to be able to have that public inquiry option. So I know it's easier to have a live streaming and that sort of thing, but I believe we still wanna make sure that we have that public inquiry portion of that because it, not only does it fulfill the part of the charter that we're supposed to be able to do, but then it's, if people want to, they still have the opportunity, they can still skip through the whole meeting, and they can still participate in that inquiry.
Thank you, Director Brown.
Um, just one question, uh, UBCM, um, in September, uh, is wrapped around a bunch of committee meetings and a bunch of regular meetings. Um, is it? regular meetings. Is it possible to switch September with May for the one meeting a month so that we can fit some of those things in? Yeah, the other thing is on on public hearings, we open as a regular meeting anyways, do we not, and then go into public hearing? Is that probably what we should be doing? That's what we do in the city of Merritt, so.
Ms. Campbell.
Yeah, that may, yeah, that may get around it. Yeah, at least we'd be meeting our notice requirements and open the regular meeting and then move into a public hearing, recess the regular meeting, move into a public hearing, and then back into the regular meeting. Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Yep. Problem solved.
Thank you. Director Rothenberger.
But that's the way we always did it, is we open the regular meeting and then go into a public hearing and then back to the regular meeting. But at any rate, I I mostly agree with what Director Stamer said. I just have a couple of questions around it. With the extra board meetings that are being contemplated, have you put a cost on that at all? Because there is one in terms of travel and hotel accommodation and meals and so on for directors who who have to travel to the to our board meetings from out of town. For me, it's fine, because I I will live close enough to drive back and forth all the time. But for those who have to stay, there is a cost every time we add a meeting. I was just curious if if you had costed it. My other question is, with regards to in camera, I I think the logical thing to do if we feel we need to change it is to move in camera, as you suggested, to eleven in the morning or so. Give it all we probably need for in cameras, generally an hour, that will do it. If that's a problem, then we might have to split it up, but just started in advance of the regular meeting instead of afterwards. And public hearings, fine, fine as is. I don't think we've got a problem there. So two questions.
Ms. Campbell.
Director Rothenberger, so the financial costs, I might turn that over to Mr. Ray, but I you're right that there would be some additional travel and potentially hotel stays involved with the two meetings, but my understanding is directors are already compensated for this two meetings a month. That's never changed in the remuneration bylaw. But I'll I'll let Mr. Mr. Ray comment on that and maybe what he he feels some additional expenses might be incurred with the travel and hotel stays.
Sorry, just before Mr. Ray, well, yeah, we remuneration isn't an issue, as I understand it. It's the it's the expense involved. But my second question actually was, what do what do our member municipalities do with in-camera meetings? How do they time them?
I can.
Coordination with right here.
Where do we start with that? I mean, okay, I see Director Brown has her hand up.
We are in a regular meeting and we move to go into an in-camera meeting at the end of our regular meeting.
Director Stamer.
We're the we're the same. And and again, with the public hearing, same same thing. We have a start of the regular meeting, and then we we basically, you know, go over the agenda, review the minutes, and then boom, we go right into the public hearing. So that's that's how we do it. And as for closed, unless it's something specific and you have to have a special closed meeting, it's at the end of the meeting. And again, normally, we just after the closed is over, you just go right back into into general and you adjourn.
Director Swan.
Thank you. Yes, we do the same. We have closed meeting at the end of the regular meeting. And then if there's anything to bring back to the regular meeting, that's reflected in the minutes. So the public will get to see that at the next regular meeting.
Thank you, Director Blackwell. I see your hand. Director Christian, you're next, after Director Blackwell.
Yeah, we do close at the end of our regular meetings, do ten-minute adjournment, start up, because we have to switch Zoom feeds and things like that, or Teams feeds. The other thing that we're looking at right now, and the only reason I'm speaking beyond this, is we're looking at moving our cow into the middle or the end of our regular meeting, instead of having it before our regular meetings to tighten up our meeting schedule and trying to reduce our number of meetings by for what we do, because we're pretty much doing as much meeting time right now as the T N R D is.
Thank you, Director Christian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We issue a call for a a closed meeting a week in advance and specify the sections of the charter that we're authorizing it to be held under, and then we hold that meeting at twelve o'clock on Tuesday, and it should end by one thirty when our regular meeting starts. If I'm doing my job as chair, occasionally, we have to reconvene after the public meeting, but for the most part, we're able to, as Director Rothenberger said, conduct the business in about an hour.
Thank you. I guess that answers the question of what everybody else does. Director Quinn, you're next.
Thank you. If we had a preference, I'd rather have an in-camera meeting beginning before the regular and then carry on afterwards for the regular meeting. That's just my own personal preference. One thing I want to make sure that we don't forget. Occasionally, there's issues in the rural areas that really that really need local input. I'll give you a good example was the me, the public hearing on the official community plan, which we held in in Blackpool. I just don't want to see that taken away or disappear, and that would be the discretion of the board anyway. But just in case it's something really, and I'm looking at some of, particularly, I'm looking at some of the activities taking in the resource sector in the more remote areas that will impact those folks, and they should have that opportunity to go to those public hearings if they're needed. So just as long as it remains in the that we can do that, then I I'm happy to go with whatever the rest of you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to comment on that?
I think Mr. Dolkova wanted to comment on that.
So on public hearings, you're correct. In our board reports, we often make the recommendation that you'll see certainly in the ones yesterday, three of them, and it said, because they were of a non-controversial nature, that they that the public hearing be part of a future regular Board of Directors meeting. Staff currently, and we used to do more of it, especially before COVID, so say eight years ago, if we thought some was a huge public hearing, something really, let's say, a new Tobiano or a can made major O C P's major cannabis zoning change or what have you. We usually delegate those, and those meetings are more often in the evening. But that's a board consideration every time. I would just ask, in the past, we've had a heck of a time finding a date that works at a venue and with each elected official, and they're usually delegated to three, not one or two. And so it is, as the corporate officer said, it is a lot more expense and work for staff, which is why our default more often is to have it as part of a regular board meeting.
Director Quinn, you had.
Yeah, I have no objection to having most of the public hearings in 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 this room or the new boardroom or wherever we are. But occasionally, there's a need for those to be held in the in the areas that are affected, and I just don't want to see us lose that. And it's a good thing for the board to have that, because we're quite often accused of, oh, you're making decisions in the tower. We never get a say. And so if you do it once in a while, I think it's a good good P R, and it's also good good governance for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to when we're holding committees, et cetera, we had up until COVID, we met twice a month, except the July and August, and then we had an out of council, out of town meeting then. So theoretically, the expenses for those for that should not be any more than what was included in the two thousand nineteen budget. And if we should have saved money last year.
Thank you, Director Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I I like to have a the public hearing and the closed meetings at eleven o'clock. I think that would be ideal. And as Director Stamer was saying, this stacking of meetings, well, that depends on what committees that you're sitting on. So if you're if you're not on different committees, they are stacked, but that's pretty hard to control. That's probably what we're doing. But I like to have them start at eleven o'clock. That would people coming in for a public hearing. They know what time they're in, they get it over with, and they're done. Some people have sat here for hours as going through it and and ended up with nothing. So I prefer eleven o'clock.
Director Singh.
Thank you, Trigilis. So one question, one comment. The question would be, is this sort of given I watched Dr. Rice sometimes struggle with internet connection and sometimes in expenses bridge. And so would electronic meeting be also, that also be a teleconference call? Would that be the base, or would you have to have like a Zoom or a kind of that kind of feature? Would you go right down to the lowest common thing we can all kind of access? Because sometimes internet services in parts of the region are challenging.
It's a good question. I I'd have to connect with our I T team to see what we're we're going to have set up in the boardroom, but there's nothing preventing the use of teleconference.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a very basic. I mean, before Zoom came along, that was kind of the way we did it, right? The question, I guess, one of the things I'm nervous about is putting a cost on democracy. I mean, you know, we have sat here for very long meetings over the last couple of months, and I remember Dr. Brown talking about that. And I tell you, like, four hours in, I my my mind's mush. And maybe my my maybe my mind's much earlier on, but I I would say it's like, you know, four or five hours. So I think we have to really, number one, have access to the public at community times for them, staff time, board time is is a secondary consideration, in my view. And secondly, you know, we have to, we have to pay for those things to happen in a way that makes sense. So number one, public access. And you know, one thing I think about, which is not really solved right now, is even people want to run for the board. You can't run for the T N R D board or a city council if you actually got a nine-to-five job. And that's that's a challenging perspective, but that's that's a problem that's sort of endemic and hard to solve. But I think in terms of, you know, the times of things, it should be a time people can give input or write in an input, and I I really have a challenge with sitting at a table for five, six hours, and the closed meetings we've had last a while have not been an hour and a half. They've been three-hour marathons on things, right? And that's been, and they've been heavy, not to give too much information, it's been challenging, right? So I think we have to really be mindful of that in terms of we pay people for hotels, but we're getting them at the best. You know, we're not worrying them out. And I know that I hate to say, but I feel I feel worn out sometimes around this table last year, year and a half, right? Thanks.
Thanks for that, Director Singh. I'm going to comment on that shortly if nobody else has anything at this particular time. Now, I'm wondering, Ms. Campbell, sort of in connection with what Director Singh just said, if the closed meetings could not be scheduled for ten o'clock in the morning, because we have been going more than an hour over and over and over again. I don't know if we'll be dealing with such momentous matters in the future. Maybe the closed meeting could be conducted in an hour, but we haven't been doing that. And if you have a meeting at eleven o'clock in the morning and you're served water and peanut butter sandwiches throughout the lunch while the meeting continues, and then you convene a regular board meeting at one thirty in the afternoon, and some of those have gone on for four hours or more. I agree with Director Singh. You're 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 just you're just, yeah, your your head is exploding with all of this stuff. And and so if we're going to move those closed meetings to the morning, it would be my preference that we move them to ten o'clock in the morning and go and have a luncheon break and then come back to our to our regular board meeting at one thirty P M. Director Roden.
Thank you, Trigilis. Just peanut butter and banana sandwiches are considered a delicacy in England. I'm just throwing that out there. I was just the meeting, the closed meetings at ten o'clock in the morning. Yes, we have had some some lengthy for our standard sessions. I just would be wanting to see how that's going to impact the committees. So that's 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 the one drop. I'm on I'm on four committees, so I'm just kind of in my head trying to figure out what that would look like with moving then the committee meetings around, because having some of them in the morning on the day of the board meeting is is quite handy for for people coming in anyway. For the board meeting, you can knock off, do the stack thing that Director Stamer's talking about.
Thanks, Director. Oh, sorry. I was just going to respond, if you don't mind. Yeah, so that that's kind of why we were looking at a later start for the closed meetings to try and still be able to fit in a committee meeting. And then if there, I mean, there's not always a closed meeting, so we hope there wouldn't be a conflict that often, but when there is, there certainly would be. But we can, we can take this back and and try to rejig things and see if we can make it work.
Yeah, well, for my part, I hope you will do that, because I don't think that, I don't think that the other suggestion works. Most committee meetings go on for more than an hour. So if the committee meeting commences at ten o'clock in the morning, and then you have a closed meeting at eleven, there's going to be a conflict there in any event. Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you presented as a whole, I think, is a good, happy medium with wanting to add some extra meetings at the request of the board to shorten up the the meeting times as a whole. I do think at some point, as a board, we need to start policing ourselves with how much we want to talk at a meeting, and that really extends the length. And and sometimes things get repeated over and over and over again, which if that's what we want to do as a board, that's fine, but at the same time, we can control the length of time of a meeting. And for me, any day of the week, I would much prefer to start at at twelve or eleven o'clock as opposed to going to five or five thirty and and getting getting out at a half decent time. And and it just makes it easier. And as as Director Singh mentioned, you know, when people have set schedules and they try and work around it, it's easier to plan. And I think a lot of people on this board probably block out Thursday as as their day to to do work. And it just makes it easier that we can do committee meetings unclosed and and regularly on the same day, which Director Stamer called stacking, but I think that's the way to do it.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Director Brown.
The city of Merritt used to have an in-camera meeting scheduled for, we'd do it in the evening, six P M. And our regular meeting started at seven. We found that we were constantly late for the public meeting. And and if we weren't late, we tried to rush decisions at at the last minute in an in-camera meeting, and we actually changed our time to afterwards, because we were so inconsistent with our start times for the regular meetings. But the other consideration was that our decisions were really rushed sometimes.
Thank you, Director Schaefer.
Our committee meetings are, you try to bunch them up in about two months or three months or four months? Because when I seen that thing in May, we don't have any committee meetings. Why can't we, instead of having a committee meeting on Thursday, do the ten o'clock in camera and do the committee meetings an extra month instead of trying to bunch them up in three or four months?
We can, we can look into that, but I my understanding was that this previous direction from the board to not have committee meetings during the summer, summer months.
No, it looked like in May, there was none, that there was room in May.
No, I think it should just be June, July, and August, I believe. Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll look at that. Yeah, you may have missed that.
Any other comments? Okay, so you've got the committee's concerns. Good luck, Ms. Campbell.
You can let me know what you think when I bring the the board calendar for approval in December.
Okay, does that, are you finished with your presentation then, or do you have more to go?
No, I am, Trigilis. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rice.
To Director Riley's point of keeping the conversation slow and not rehashing things, I agree with everybody. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to hear again from Ms. Dolkova. She has something to tell us about shipping containers, I I hope.
Can you hear me now? This is easier than the United Nations. So all about shipping containers. Why is this? Oh, there we are. So I have about twenty slides. It broadens on what's in your report, so I don't, I hate to repeat what's in the report, because I assume you all read all your reports. Nah, maybe I'll overlap it. I'm going to talk a little bit about the current context in the T N R D, and we are not special in this respect. What's been in the bylaw, it's been amended a couple times since two thousand twelve. Our historic bylaws didn't allow them, because twenty-five years ago, they didn't exist. But they're breeding at night. And so what we're doing on enforcement, a little bit about buildings, which are not the problem, options and finish up with our standard staff recommendations. So what is not the problem? So what is not the problem? Rural areas, so here you have a logging operation that protects their equipment, so it's not theft in a shipping container. You know, first, it's allowed by bylaw, second, the neighbors know it's not going to be there forever. There's always neighbors, sometimes, well, there are more remotely locations. Here's a, on ALR, a farming operation. And I tried to just, to be fair, I tried to go everywhere in the TNRD. We didn't get, my apologies, we didn't get up to Blue River, but Director Quinn tells me they're breeding in Blue River as well. So agriculture operations in the ALR, or bad photo because I took this with my phone, of a mining operation, also industrial uses, certain zones allow them. So these are not, even if it's allowed by bylaw or not allowed, we don't get complaints. But it is allowed by bylaw. So what's a minor problem? Here you have a beautiful construction on, this is in the area of Knopf and Sullivan Lake. So, you know, this is a vacant lot, and that's what was there. There was a complaint, it was a reasonable complaint. You can see there's houses nearby from the neighbors. We dealt with it, there was, like, again, there was one owner with one property. Or this is on, in Monk Park area. It's a nice container, it's not huge, it's not rusty, and it matches the house over there in the corner, even though they're not allowed in residential zones. It, and we did get a complaint, but it was, and we dealt with it. So when there's one small container in a whole subdivision, we can deal with it. What is a major problem is when you have an R2 zone that prohibits them, and all of a sudden, there's four varying conditions beside each other on one lot. But there's no complaint. Or where you have an unsightly borderline, unsightly premises, this is in Pritchard on Director Rothenberger's side. And we've had complaints in Pritchard, there's small lots in Pritchard, right? They're, they're smaller than a lot of city lots. And people tend to accumulate stuff. So I don't know what's in the shipping container, but I, it would be easier to deal with it or get less complaints if all the crap in the yard was in the shipping container. So there we are, here's another one. This is, I believe it's a black lotion way, I'm going by memory, and that's always risky. You know, beautiful property, they don't want to look at them by their house, so they move them right to the property line at the front, so everybody else driving by looks at them. And those don't look like they're going to be gone anywhere soon. So what's in our bylaw? This is our current bylaw, we have tinkered with this since 2012. First off, the vast majority of, of shipping containers are allowed as an accessory use, and that's critical. So remember the one in Knopf Lake? The one with the, the stacked ones, the three? There was no dwelling on that property, there was no use. All there was was shipping containers, so those were not an accessory use, even if they were permitted in the zone. So you have to have something happening on the land besides storage and shipping containers for it to be an accessory use. And that's most of our industrial, rural, commercial, and institutional zones. So there's the big subject, too. So we allow, so 12.5 meters is 40 feet, and 6 meters is 20 feet. They come in increments because that's the way they fit on ships, rails, and trucks. So you're allowed 140-foot or two 20-foot ones in the rural zones and in country residential and small holdings, which is also, so rural residential do allow. It's the smaller lots that we don't allow them on. And then you're allowed 240-foot or 420-foot in institutional and the other commercial zones. And I don't believe we even limited at all in industrial zones. So new gold, fill your boots. Shipping containers everywhere. We don't allow, this is a no-brainer, item C, they don't make them longer than 40 feet, so that's not a problem. They do, oh. Oh, well, that's new, I haven't seen those, sorry. Oh, like, yeah, yeah, gotcha. So the sighting, we require where they're allowed to be, that they be in the rear, behind the principal building, or in the rear setback, and that you can't put them right up to the property line. They have to, just like an accessory building, they have to be like a meter and a half or whatever the setback is in the zone. And they have to meet the conditions of use. And it's also, this is, E is the last amendment we made, because of course, nobody wants them, if you back onto a lake, your rear yard off the street is the lake, and nobody wants them there. So we've said there, you can, if they're screened properly, you can put them at the side. But they still have to, you can't put them right at the property line, like in some of those photos we showed along the front property line on the road. They have to conform to the same building setbacks, even though they're not buildings. So a little, a couple words about bylaw enforcement. So some communities, we've had complaints, we've acted, we can kind of nip it in the bud when there's only a few. In other communities, we've had no complaints, but we know they're out there. And people may be unaware that they're not allowed, and they just keep accumulating. And as per board policy, we don't act unless there's a written complaint. Because sometimes we get inquiries, but not a complaint. And when you, if you drive like through Savinat, you'd assume, there's so many, you'd assume they're allowed. Whereas if you drive through parts of Pritchard, if there's only one or two, you might think, ooh, especially if they're in a messy yard, they're probably not allowed. And over time, shipping containers do not become more attractive. And I'll just say that. So neighborhoods will reach a threshold. And at some point, especially when people go to sell their properties, and they don't have a shipping container, and they have a nice front yard, nice curbside appeal, and either side of them, the neighbors have four containers stacked along the property line, then what? So that's our predicament, and that's, so that's why I'm bringing you this report. As critical as all, some of the other things with the water systems or greenhouse gas emissions and wildfires, but I think we have to start to do something. So I'm going to give you one case study that's been an irritant for a couple of years. There it is, it doesn't really matter where it is. It was, we've got legitimate complaints. There was about 100-plus feet of sea cans along the property line, close to the property line. I didn't, we didn't get a survey to determine exactly how close. We've asked politely for years. We've sent firm letters, friendly letters, we've issued a ticket, I negotiated a compliance agreement, it expired. They moved one. And this is a Lakeshore residential zone, they're not allowed at all. And when they moved that one, they moved one of the small ones, they moved it to a neighboring property in the same area. So what, what do we do? Like, do, do staff, I have never brought a report to any elected officials about court action for shipping containers. But I'm not, this, this, we're now, this is all, our only option left. We could issue tickets every week, but again, they, they are in violation of the compliance agreement. We can go to collections, but, you know, that's more staff time than the cash is worth. I'd almost rather, if we're going to enforce, I'd rather go to court next year. So a few words about shipping containers and building. I don't, did anybody go to the link in the report? Isn't that amazing? That building, that is a Okanagan company. I'm not going to pronounce it right, Honbombo or something? And this is a still from that video. This is on a mountaintop where they brought in three prefab modified containers under building permit, constructed pretty quickly because they're all modified and engineers signed off in the shop. However, there's other shipping containers that will, they'll, folks will use to just in their backyard with no building permit, and they'll use them as a structural component. Like, and they are not, depends on, we don't know how thick the metal is. We don't know how, whether it's rusted or how old it is. You have to look at what the snow load potential is. So different parts of the TNRD would have different loads on those, on those roofs and on those containers. Or, I mean, people just building around, they, they're, they can be a building component, but that is not what they start as. They can be stored within a building, there's no regulations about that. Just like you can have totes or other metal objects stored within an accessory building, but that accessory building has to meet our bylaws. Here's one that was very problematic, it's well off-grid. It was a family with four or five kids. And I'm thinking off-grid, kind of like Venable's Valley. And no, this is the opposite of the other one. There was no inspection, no engineering. We don't know what their heat source is or what have you, they were living in the Manning Creek area. So points to ponder, this is, this is sort of why I'm here. Now, do we want to amend the zoning bylaw to be more preventative than the slide we brought up previously? Do we start a information campaign? There will be some backlash to that because there's a lot of them out there. But I think we have to do something. Do we escalate if compliance agreements and letters and ticketing are ineffective? Do we enforce or advise folks where we see them breeding without, before we even get a complaint? To just let them know, when we get a complaint, we'll come back? Or do we do a little bit of all of the above? And so those are the sort of thoughts I want to present to you. Now, what is our recommendation? And so we have four recommendations, they're in the report, and I've just got one slide for each recommendation, and I'm done. So first off, we already allow for temporary placement. Say you've got a building, you're building materials, and you've got nowhere to save them because it can be pretty secure, and so you don't want your items and your tools stolen. Or you're moving, and they see a for sale sign, so they know there's a property conveyance, and we get a trailer there or shipping container. We don't get complaints about that first. And even if we did, we're not that fast with our responses that, you know, if it's there for a month, we're not going to do anything, or even two. But perhaps we should put this into the board enforcement policy, just to make it really clear. So this is kind of a, this, this is an easy win. Second, do you, so the, the three main zones, the residential zones where we do not allow them at all, maybe we should allow them based on lot area and compliance. So here you have two, oops, sorry, two cases. I don't know where, so we have one here, I believe that's Pritchard, where, you know, it's in the back, it's a nice container, it's not a big one. The neighbor is shielded with a hedge, an evergreen hedge. So on that, and that property was just slightly over 10,000 square feet. Maybe on, in that R2 zone, one should be allowed, subject to the criteria that we spell out in the bylaw, and maybe a sighting permit because that's the only way you can check where they're, where they're located. And, but the one on the opposite side, so that, that is right in the front yard setback. That lot is, and I found this one because it's one of the smallest lots. It's, that lot's only 3,900 square feet. There's a big house in the middle, there's almost nowhere to put a shipping container, and the container itself is about the same size. This is not an accessory building, that's the neighbor's house on a different property, that's also 3,900 square feet. So if, if a lot is so small that you can't even accommodate it to the setbacks, maybe it shouldn't be on that lot. Next, to require sighting permits, here's a couple where it's right in the front yard. And the reason all three of those are put there is because they are there because the, where the owners' windows are and where their view is, they can't see their own shipping containers. So nobody wants to look at them, even if they're their own. So in a case like that, I would argue, no, they should be, and these are larger lots, where whatever the zone is, R2 or LR1, they probably could be allowed one, but maybe not right there, though those are right in the front yard setback at the property line. Again, so they can't see them, they don't interrupt their view of lakes and what have you. And last recommendation is that we set minimum standards, which will be very hard to enforce. And I don't even, I, I want to do some homework on how we could do that. Because we do not have development permits, and we don't, anything aesthetic, like, they're not a Tobiano, they're not allowed. And they would jump on that immediately, unless it was, again, during a construction period. I believe contractors can have a shipping container, just like a work site. But here's two that are rusty, and of course, on the one here. I'm sorry if the folks at home can't see my pointer. Well, there's no windows, they belong to that house, but of course, they put it there because that's the side of their house where there's no windows. So that's kind of, that's it, and this is not in the TNRD.
Right, I have Directors Quinn, Stamer, Elliot, Roden, and Rothenberger, and Smith. So Director Quinn?
I didn't have my hand up, I was just listening.
You didn't? Okay.
Thank you.
Director Stamer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we have enough time to be talking about this thoroughly, but thanks very much to Mr. Sedolkova for the presentation. Yeah, I'm sure all our, our regional district and municipalities are grappling with the same, same issue. And, and one of the things that I see in your presentation, and thank you with the, with the referral to Tobiano, is that I think we're a little bit lax in not only information, but also enforcement. And I think that, you know, like you mentioned about breeding at night, there's a reason why it's breeding at night, is so that we don't get to see what's going on during the day. And I think, honestly, if we don't get ahead of this, we're going to cause, we're going to have a lot of problems. And I think there's got to be a way where we can make it a monetary penalty for these people for doing this. I mean, we've had the same conversation with building permits. And you know, it's too bad that when somebody goes outside and fragrantly doesn't get a building permit for something, yet they still get to enjoy having electricity. And we've had this conversation before that, you know, they should get a six-month permit. They don't get that, if it doesn't get done, we shut the power off. Well, of course, we know we can't do that because it's, you know, we can't do that. But I think there's got to be a way for us to be able to hit them with a hammer and hit them very hard if they're, if they're going to go outside the boundaries and make it a punitive damage so that they actually have to pay it. I don't know about going into court, but I mean, even if we have to put it on the tax roll, but it's every week they get a, they get a ticket. You know, I know we're having the same challenges in the district of Barrier, where all of a sudden, these things sprout out, and people know what the requirements are, they've already asked what the requirements are, and then they turn around and, and do it anyways. So it's got to be frustrating for your, your staff and everyone else included. But I think we're going to have to have another meeting just to be able to go through all this because there's a lot of information here, and I really don't know almost where to start because it seems like it's a peripheral thing, you know, all through the whole region.
It absolutely is, but certainly recently, we have seen in the last year such a proliferation that there are some communities where we can't get, where are, where, I'd say we're already at the point where I'm going to recommend we change the bylaw reasonably to permit one because we can argue that and enforce. But if we were to go into all the properties, and there's dozens, and try to enforce against all those people, it's just not going to work. And people do have problems in some rural, smaller communities with theft out of accessory buildings. And these, the shipping containers are harder to break into.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to see the bylaw changed. One, so that it's a level playing field. The other one is so that we don't have to rely on complaints. Because some people just won't complain. And we've had a, over the years, of people complaining and not of something other. Over the years of people complaining and not of something other than containers and not. Really getting the problem solved. So we need to have a bylaw that deals with this. Outright. Uh, it's absolutely stupid to have two or three containers sitting on some of those lots. And maybe it's because people don't want to get a building permit and put up a. Uh, accessory building. I don't know, but we need like Director Stamer says, we need to get a handle on this or we're going to be a container. City instead of a rule.
Yeah, so we yeah, we see them go from one property as the example. They they go to another call property down the street. If we enforce, then what?
Thank you, uh, Director Roden.
Uh, thank you, Chair Gillis. Um, the village of Ashcroft wrestled with this before my time on council, but I was there at that meeting, um, covering it for the newspaper. And our fire chief at the time, Brian Henderson, brought up some very important points regarding fire. Um, and I will point people to um intermodal shipping container fire safety. A way towards better fire practices produced by the University of the Fraser Valley in twenty fourteen. And it is dedicated to um. Captain Daniel Botkin, who died in the line of duty in Enderby in December of twenty eleven, when he was fighting a fire. At a log, a prop log home building site. And an intermodal C can that was about six feet away from a building that was on fire exploded, blew the door off and killed the firefighter in question. So I know since then, we've had one fire in the village of Ashcroft where uh C can has been involved. Uh, our fire crew approaches these very, very cautiously. Because if they are too close, because there's no building, there's no regulations about citing, they are often placed, as Chief Henderson said at the time. Very, very close to a building. If that building catches fire, these things will just overheat. They're like an oven. And firefighters, because of the lack of windows, um, generally, um, and the chaotic nature of a fire scene. They have no idea what is inside these things.
Correct.
Absolutely no idea. Uh, a lot of times it tends to be materials that can be combustible. They often have very poor ventilation, exhaust, no windows. Uh, doors that are fairly well sealed and you can therefore um. Have tragedies such as with the one that happened in Enderby. And I'm just pointing this out because it's something of which I am very aware. Uh, through my work with the fire department in Ashcroft and talking to fire chiefs. And I just think if that's a tool that can be used to regulate them in some way. Shape or form, I think it's a very powerful tool.
So to just by, I'm looking for direction because it's so open. Um, but I think we correct, we have to get ahead of it and revise a couple bylaws. I believe and aboard policy. And I don't want to go. I mean, I'm conscious next year is an election year and some people are very particular about their shipping containers. And they're feel like, well, why are you picking on this? There's all these other bigger infractions. So we want to go into it with a longer term plan, not uh sort of. Go in there with ra- you know, by law enforcement, heavy hand right away.
Director Rothenberger.
These things are an absolute blight on the landscape. And if I was God, I would just blow them all up. So my question is, is it possible we'd have to grandfather what's already there, but is there any?
No.
What? No?
Absolutely not.
Permitted?
They're not, they were not permitted. They became permitted in two thousand twelve. Then we loosened up the bylaw a little bit more in about two thousand fourteen fifteen. And most of the photos I showed you are ones that are not permitted.
Okay, let me let me rephrase. Um, so if we were to. Ban them, it would be virtually impossible to enforce at this point because they proliferated so much. It's just not a practical consideration. Is there any prospect of banning? Them from this point forward and not not allowing any new ones and enforcing that because that would be a more manageable piece, would it not?
No, because it would be very, they're they're not attached to the ground. They're 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 transportable. That would be very hard to prove what's been there before or not. Like you can't even necessarily re- see them in satellite imagery. We know like twenty, twenty-five years ago, they weren't here. Um, what I think we could do if it were. I think we should create a citing permit. They have a fifty dollar citing permit, started registry of them. So you, if you change the by the zoning bylaw to permit them in the R one, R two. And L R one zones, then you'd be grandfathering the ones that were there before, only then.
I mean, that that would be a start. I I just think you said somewhere, one of your questions was should be be become more permissive. I I think we should become much less permissive and tight enough in any way that we can, what what's available to us. And and that we can practically enforce.
So it's a land use. This would be a public hearing change.
Thank you, uh, Director Smith.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I um, we had um, a couple of these, of course, in Logan Lake as well. And um, one of the things that we asked um was that they be sort of screened in or, you know. Um, in some sort of a a more visibly, you know. Making it look a little bit better than it already does, whether it's with siding or with with fencing or with um cedars or whatever it happens to be. So just as a suggestion, I don't know if that's um something, but I like the idea of a a citing permit and then. Some sort of a registry to kind of sort of try and get a a handle on it. Um, but thank you. Yep.
Uh, thank you. I don't mean to interject or inter. Speak out a turn here, but uh, Director Smith's question raises another one in my mind. And that is, I know that in a on in an A on an AF one property. I built a shed a number many years ago and it was not required no building permit because it was under a certain number of square feet. And I think if I recall, I built twelve by twenty, which would be two hundred and forty, and uh, there was no permit required for that. Um, so would it be? With respect to what Director Smith was saying, if a person got a a container and put a proper raftered roof and siding on it, would that? Um, alleviate the situation uh with respect to the with respect to the unsightlyness or the. Or the um trouble that neighbors might have with it, Mr. Dilke.
So. In our rural zones, if there's farm assessment and you're building a low human occupancy building, so a shed for your tractor net. And you have farm assessment, y- you can build up to six hundred square feet. Probably square meters, which is a large barn without a permit. In other rural zones, you can go up to five hundred and ninety square feet. So that's a large accessory building. Without a permit. Um. You still have to meet setbacks and what have you, but we don't. So this is tricky. We don't regulate the aesthetic quality of accessory buildings. Um. Yeah, those are the recommendations. I. Lots of folks, lots of certainly municipalities require citing permits, sometimes for accessory buildings, even those prefab sheds. Even if you don't need a building permit, you need to check your sightings. So. You can't put it in your front yard or right up to your property line by your neighbor's house. So but placement of a shipping container with a roof should necessitate. At least review that the shipping container is structurally sound to support whatever load you're putting on it. So really, you should have an engineer sign it off. Our building inspectors are not structural engineers. Um, and they're also the the thing I was surprised what shipping containers cost. Even the rusty ones that are done their service life are not that cheap.
Is it not that cheap as in how much?
Um. So the ones on page forty-nine of the report that I found for sale in Canadian dollars, and these were forty footers. So it's well with taxes and it's going to be over seven thousand and then probably with delivery. It's going to be another, you know, potentially five hundred bucks to drop it, depending on where it's coming from. And those are used, not brand new. Shipping containers. So you can find one for around the cheapest one for twenty foot is about four thousand.
Interesting. Um. Director Blackwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I um, I think part of it just anecdotally is trying to get around having to do the building permit process. Uh, you know, I can see why people especially want to do that. Um, I'm pretty sure in Clearwater, we have minimum. Lot size before you can have one at all. Um, is that a consideration or is that is that something that we could do in the T N R the T N R D? I I think that's a great place to start. Um, but you know, noting that Clearwater, we have trees on every lot. So there's the ability to to um screen these and I have one in my backyard. Um, none of my neighbors can see it. Um, but in places like Savinaw, I mean, you can see them. You you probably still can actually see them from outer space. Um, and every single leader, neighbor for four or five hundred meters around has can see it. Probably if they have its a line of sight. So I don't think that solves it all.
Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think as you have any recommendations, I think regulation uh is key here. I don't think, as mentioned, we're never going to get rid of all of these, but to have a little bit of control as to what can be done uh where and when. Um, and with regulations, as you mentioned, the site permit, but having those front and set side backs, uh, sets I front and back. Um, setbacks. Um, but I didn't maybe looking at the total number of square feet. That could be um in the shipping containers. And when I look at a forty foot C can as example, being three hundred square feet. Um, that's that's fairly large. And if we start looking at at how taxation's done based on assessed value, based on on structures being. Built, um, you know, that changes the equilibrium of our taxation model of how we work. Um, and and it's not just for that property person, but it's for the whole T N R D and how we balance. And how we pay for our services and that actually starts to affect it um by people not making that investment into their property to increase their assessed value.
Yeah, absolutely. If you build a, even if you don't need a building permit, because you don't need a building permit in all our zones, the cutoff is sort of. Think it's two hundred some odd square feet for the small zones. So that's. You know, a small shipping container, but you pay tax on that as an improvement attached to the ground, but you do not pay tax on shipping containers.
Yeah, I think that's should be a big.
I didn't even consider that.
This discussion. Thank you.
Good point. Um, Director Rice.
Thanks, Chair.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I just listened to all the conversations. I I think maybe now is not the time because as you mentioned, elections coming up. And certainly some people have more of an issue on that. But listening to um to some of the comments. We have a really nice shipping container and it's got a really nice cover in Spences Bridge. Nobody would even know there's a shipping container there. That a gentleman put in and and uh, and and so I think the monetary uh brought up by Director Stamer. And uh combined with maybe a little bit of a proactive thing at a certain point in time. As you suggested, we need to get ahead of this. So I think eh along with the regulations is the route to go because. There's definitely, you know, you could have your top ten eyesores in these areas and stuff like that. Take that proactive approach. And yes, if they move it, it's a problem, but then you hit them with the monetary again. Maybe they'll get tired of paying that monetary and moving that thing around. Because there's a cost to move these containers too. So they're paying on both ends. And so maybe. At the end of the day, when the time is right, um, maybe that's what we need to do is get ahead of it by taking a proactive approach. And attach a monetary uh uh price to pay i- if they want to keep moving these containers around and and start. To um eliminate some of these eyesores because I I do believe you're right, just driving around, it it is, it's worse. It gets worse every time you go for a drive, you see another container in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just looking at uh the recommendations, looking at the recommendations and. Um, that sitting fee I I think would just end up being something that would people would pay anyways. And then they'd say, well, that's okay. It's an extra fifty bucks. I'm going to put it wherever I want. And that maybe there's a, maybe we can bring back, maybe staff can bring back a recommendation next month on. The proposals on what she, uh, Mr. Savikova is proposing on the square footage of these. Um, you know, the size of the size of, because I don't think we have that, do we?
No, you don't.
Yeah, so so we can actually actually know exactly what we're talking about on the size of the lots, what's approved, whether it's an accessory building and or a shipping container. Because some of the times it's limited, especially in some of the subdivisions, you can't put a shipping container in there unless you've got a crane that can go right over top of the house. So. And 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 you know, like you mentioned about the setbacks and things like that. I mean, all our municipalities have worked really well on that. And maybe we can look at. We know what what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, so that in the new year, you know, we can come up with a with a clear guideline of what we would like to see throughout the region. And whether it's an election year or not, at least people know this is what this is what we've we've uh, you know, refined to. And what we can actually um try to, you know, make work in our region.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Director Polderman. I have Director Polderman, Quinn, Watson, Elliot and Rothenberger.
Excuse me, Chair Gillis. Director Swan has had her hand up for quite some time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Director Swan, actually, because we don't have that screener in front of us anymore. Uh, well, why don't we put Director Swan in right now then and and then Director Polderman?
Thank you, Chair Gillis. The problem we have in Clinton is we have a commercial property that has a huge. Bright yellow container. Anyone coming in from the north can see it. We had talked to the owner about removing that and he agreed he would do that. Never did. Because there's advertising on it telling people where they can rent these huge containers. We went after him with our sign bylaw because it is technically a sign. He still didn't do anything except sold the property with the container on it. And the new owner assumed that the container went with the property and refuses to do anything. So I like the idea of a citing permit and standards for condition and appearance. Because this thing is ugly.
Uh, did you wish to comment on that, Mr. Dilke?
No, no, I agree, totally agree. Most of the municipalities are more restrictive than our bylaw. So our bylaw is already more permissive because of all the zones where we do allow uh, an amount.
Right, okay. Uh, sorry, Director Polderman, go now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it possible to um have a levy for buildings that aren't attached to the ground?
Nope. That's under B C assessment um for taxation, I think you mean, correct?
No, I'm talking like if you have a building that is not attached to the ground, that you would have to pay a yearly fee to for such building.
Um, I would have to look in legislation and as local governments, whether we're regions or municipalities. If we are not allowed to, so municipalities have far more provision under the community charter than a regional district. Like we can't even charge business licenses, right? So I don't believe regional districts can. Municipalities, I'm not sure.
Like if we had a yearly fee for having a building not attached to the ground, then it would dissuade also. New new containers coming into the.
So for us to the logistics in a large region, it wouldn't be viable. But again, I don't think legally we can.
Thanks, Director Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being the proud owner of one of those lights on the landscape, I would uh. I don't disagree with Director Rothenberger. However, the one that I have is parked on industrial property, so it would be allowed. It has been cited as if it was a building and I bought it because it's really convenient for storage. And you can't really break into it without a blowtorch. On the other hand, in town, they seem to be sprouting like bamboo shoots all over the place. And there's one under construction right now, which are two forty containers separated by about fifty feet and two more forty foot containers. And a big fabric top put on it. And the notion I think is that, uh, oh, well, it's not a building, so we don't need a permit.
Yeah.
And they are growing and we do need to have some form of regulation. Um, whether people comply or not, I don't know. And our trouble is, and I'll be really blunt, is that. We have a gentleman in the Prime Minister's office beating his chest about we're a country of rules and laws. We have a same similar gentleman in Victoria saying it. We have the same similar gentleman in Victoria saying it, and they refuse to enforce laws. They're already on the books and I'm talking about the Little House Warriors and people are just saying, stuff it. And it comes right down to that kind of thing and we can regulate to our hearts content, but if people are going to say, stuff it. You know, really, and we quite blunt again, we're wasting our time. But I'll support those. Those four recommendations.
Yeah, so this strikes a bound. So if we go to some of these, and I'm thinking places like Blue River, Savinaw, Spences Bridge Improvement Districts, which are mostly where a lot of our R two zones are, there's also Pritchett, but the serviced areas. And we come with something that's really reasonable, then I think it'll be easier to get buy in. Rather than just coming to tell everybody they're not allowed anywhere.
I'll support those those recommendations. I'm just pointing out the reality on the ground in some of the rural areas.
Thank you, Director Watson.
Thank you. It's been so long, I can hardly remember what I put my hand up for. Regina, did you say something about we don't regulate the attractiveness of an accessory building? Do we regulate the attractiveness of a dwelling?
We do not, however, a lot of our subdivisions have building schemes by developers, section two eighteen covenants that spell out all kinds of things.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you very much. I have a question about if we allow for one container on a lot and somebody has two or three, can we force them to move it?
Yes, we can, but it would have to be, we have a, we have a policy for enforcement with telling people the rules. It's all, I'm not going to repeat all that. It is your board by law enforcement policy, which we follow every day and we share that with folks. But the one case example where we ticketed and, you know, they're just like, you can't make me the only solution for that one. And I think we're we're at some point, we're going to have to be proactive enough to take one to court, take the most egregious one to court. Because it's kind of a no brainer. It should be an easy win. I'm not a lawyer, but I would get a legal opinion on that. And then that, so that's a way to kick off. Doing that at the same time as a public information blitz would be really the way I think we'd have to proceed, because they're everywhere.
Yeah, we did. At one time, we had a, and I don't know whether we still have it or whether legislation changed. But if you had somebody consistently with with things on their lots that were unsafe and they didn't do it, you could take it out of there and put the cost on their taxes. And so what I'm saying is, if they don't want to comply, we'll take it off anyway. And you can pay for it on your taxes. And maybe that would stir some of these folks into realizing that they can't have so many of them.
So, under the unsettling premises by law and under legislation, both in the Charter and the Local Government Act, there is direct action or direct, what is it called, direct? Well, direct enforcement where we hire a contractor to clean up somebody's property. We have to hold their things for a certain amount of time, because otherwise we're just stealing their things, even if it's bags of garbage. There's a process for that and it can be put on their taxes, but it's a different process than with, like with buildings.
How about a container is not a building?
It's not a building, no. Let me, I need to do some research on that, because it's not a building. But, you know, if it's empty, open and rusting, we can clearly argue that it's rubbish. And rubbish is defined in the property maintenance section on the unsettling promises by law. But a lot of those wouldn't qualify. So it becomes a zoning infraction, really, is what I'm saying.
Director Rothenberger.
Just to comment, it's been mentioned several times during this discussion that there's an election about a year from now. I I just really hope we aren't going to start viewing sensitive policies in terms of there's an election twelve months from now. And so between now and then, we're not allowed to do anything that might create some hard feelings anywhere, because we're afraid of what would happen at the polls. And I hope with this one, we'll charge ahead with it and do what we can.
Thanks. You stole my thunder, Director Rothenberger. I was just going to say from from my point of view, Ms. Dilkeva, by all means, proceed to take some of the most egregious ones to court and get yourself a precedent established and go ahead on it. And this is no time to be timid about the fact, because of the fact that it's an election year. We're not here to protect our elected positions. We're here to govern the activities that go on within the Thompson Nicola Regional District. That's our responsibility to the taxpayers. And if we do something that offends some taxpayers, those, it's inevitable that we're going to offend them anyway at one time or another. So I don't think that this is any time to worry about elections. That's my personal opinion, which nobody really asked for, but there it is.
Yep. Understood. So I will bring a report probably in January or December with a recommendation on some of the more, the finer details under those four recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you could please consider a maximum amount of square footage as well.
Yes, will do.
Director Roden, you have more?
Thank you. Just one final thing. We've all been hearing about the supply chain crisis and one of the big factors in the supply chain crisis is the lack of shipping containers. So perhaps some advertisements offering top dollar for some of these containers to be sold back to shipping companies might clear some of them off the landscape. I'm just a thought.
Director Stamer.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. Just in response to Director Roden's. Actually, it's cheaper for them to actually build a brand new shipping container in China and ship it here than actually try to retrieve the ones that are here. Price of the containers have actually come down.
And Director Quinn just.
No, I was just going to say that, just that Director Stamer did, but the shipping companies have got rid of them because they no longer meet international standards for container shipping. That's part of it.
Those lots of, I can tell you from personal experience that lots of them are made available for sale after they've only been used for one. So they're certainly. Okay, that takes us to, I think, Director News Roundtable. And I think we'll start with Director Crowe and go around that way, which would be, I understand, clockwise. Director Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a couple of items we're working on in our area. We're back working on Pioneer Park with the expansion and updating some of the equipment. That's our key project we're working at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director O'Reilly. I'll do the back row and then I'll come back to Director Singh.
No meeting, no report.
Director, Director Roden.
Thank you. Big news in Ashcroft. We got one point three million dollar, hundred percent grant for completely replacing lift station number one. One of those really unsexy things that has been identified as critical by our Public Works Department for some time. So work's going ahead on that. Very happy. We're also getting a new hot tub. We only got an eighty percent grant for a hundred and twenty five thousand for that one, but guess which one people are really excited about, the hot tub or the lift station? I'll let you have a think about that. And then just quickly, today, press release from the province, motor vehicle prohibitions related to wildfires. White Rock, Lake Tremont Creek, July Mountain, Litten Creek, these are all now huge areas where motor vehicles are prohibited, except on major roads and for public and private access, no hunting. So A T Vs, off road vehicles, cars, trucks, anything. I suggest you might want to go take a look at the area around where you are, because this is going to be big for our hunting community.
Yeah, rather ashamed they hadn't imposed that kind of a ban when the, when the province was so dry that you'd start a fire if you happened to spit. Director Watson.
Thank you. As yesterday was the celebration of Gold Country Community's thirtieth birthday. And we gave out some, a little bit of swag for anybody who used to be on the board or still is on the board. And we're just doing well with that whole enterprise. And both Director Rice and I are now on the Hat Creek Board, which is always entertaining too. So we're keeping busy.
Cool. Director Singh.
Happy Halloween.
Director Brown.
We've got a lot of economic development happening in Merritt, to the point that we've had to hire additional staff. Because we can't keep up with the projects that are coming at us. And these are good things. We're also looking at downtown revitalization and hopefully looking at a light industrial park area, which is desperately needed to bring industry into the area. Whole lot of other things going on, but I don't have any more for you right now.
Thank you. Director Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pass.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief as well. As to Director Roden's comment about the access to the fires. Unfortunately, there's going to be a bunch of stuff that's probably going to come down the pipe here next spring. Inasmuch as that, there's a lot of work that should have been done, that hasn't been done on the fires with it, whether it's fire guards, rehabilitation, that sort of thing. So I think part of the reason why they're trying to lessen the impact out there is because they're trying to get ahead of some of this stuff that they should have been doing a long time ago. And the other thing is, is that I've been made aware that, and I'm sure other municipalities as well, is that there's a lot of changes coming down the pipe with insurance requirements. I'll give you a case in point quickly of a property that is on the highway. It's a highway commercial piece of property. The owner would like to be able to have a secondary dwelling rental in that building. So it's still, still the same zoning. We're not changing the zoning, but because of the way it's classified, not only does he have to put up about five hundred dollars a month for for insurance, but the the tenant will have to do about almost the same. And then you add the taxes on top of it. And it's because they're changing some of the insurance rules and it's making it very difficult for some of these businesses to even be able to continue operating. So that's all I have to say. And plus the fact that we're super busy, just like Director Brown has mentioned, we got a lot of stuff on our plate as well.
Good. I'll move at this point to the screen. Director Swan.
Thank you, Chair Gillis. We're really excited to see residents about to move into our new seniors facility. That's twenty units. So that will free up some of the housing and hopefully reduce the, the housing crisis that we're having here. It's so bad that we hired a new community development coordinator and she couldn't start her job when she was supposed to, because she could find nowhere to rent. We have zero occupancy. So hopefully this will help alleviate that. The construction has started on our new Public Works Building, which has our public works firm. I'm really excited. We've been working towards that for about six years now. So to finally have the foundation poured and start framing is very exciting for him. And like everybody else, we're really busy. Thank you.
Good to hear. Director Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was taking my turn as being the Zoom participant and it actually has been quite good today. So maybe that alleviates some of the fears from others. Two things from Kamloops, one good, one not so good. But first of all, the not so good, we are experiencing a rapid and critical increase in homelessness in Kamloops. And you'll see and hear over the coming weeks of some solutions that myself and council are putting in place. And those will come, I think, with a lot of noise and a lot of concern from neighborhoods. But just know this, that we have in our minds the best interest of keeping people safe essentially over the winter. And so we're using that as our guiding principle and going forward. On the good news side, over the coming weeks, we're going to be entertaining an application from City Gardens, which will be, I think, almost five hundred new housing units in downtown Kamloops, two towers, which will really be transformative in terms of the housing options in downtown Kamloops. And and we're looking forward to that. So that was all.
Thanks, Director. Director Rain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've been busy all summer working on a seven point six million dollar water reservoir, because we are getting short on domestic water supplies. So we have to build a reservoir to store the spring runoff, so we can use it during the busier months. We're also working with the Shushut Lake Band on a cultural historical presentation in our new conference room building. And that's moving forward slowly, but we're really excited to see the community's response to that. We also have more development applications going. There's quite a bit of construction underway. And we, we're really looking forward to seeing some of those projects completed before this winter. We're also working on a housing, affordable housing strategy. We're out right now looking for bids from consultants and hopefully we can get that underway for this fall and winter. And then lastly, there's still a major concern about access by foreign visitors. About thirty five percent of all our overnight visitors to Sun Peaks are coming from outside of the country. And that market was lost ever since March twenty twenty. And we're still a little bit concerned about how that's going to open up. Certainly looking at the forecast for this winter, it's obvious that foreign visitors are not prebooking. So as the rules relax, we're hoping that we're going to see some of our Australian, New Zealander, American guests coming back. But it's it's a bit of a concern. And I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Rain. It does seem to be opening up anyway, that that those travel restrictions are dropping off one slowly, one by one. So perhaps a better season for Sun Peaks this year. I'll go around back, the back row first with with Director Quinn, Director Smith and Director Rothenberger, then the, then the second tier and then the the first row here. Director Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting in Blue River on chlorinating the water system. There was a large outcry from a small group of people that don't want it. We may hear more from that in the future and it's probably going to be an election issue, which is fine. There has been no change in the Little House Warrior situation, other than that keep causing problems. Mr. Wiggly's organization has informed me that they they are getting bookings for this winter. And they like Sun Peaks or whatever happens on the border. There's been a request from the community, some members of the community to do a bit better emergency planning. And I've spoken to Kevin and to Scott, and I think there's something in the works for that. And additionally, when the Trans Mountain Pipeline is finished and the camp departs, we're going to have this huge area, which is crown land held for parks and for future parks for Blue River. It's an interesting opportunity and we're considering trying to figure out doing some parks plan. And in the discussion that we had, I know that a number of you other electoral area directors have parks. And is there an appetite to do an overall master plan for all community parks within the rural areas? It would be nice if we could consider that. If not, we would be coming, making up some form of a parks plan for that area. And yes, we have containers, lots of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, one of the challenges I think that we've been facing the last little while is staffing. So we're pretty happy to report that we've managed to get our corporate officer position filled as well as our C A O position in Logan Lake. So that's exciting for for us. We actually promoted within our Director of Public Works into our C A O position. So but I have really noticed that it's a, it's a big, big challenge to attract really good, talented you know, people with obviously what we have in terms of what we can afford to to pay. So the other one that we're really still challenged with is by law. So just, just mentioning that for any of you that may be going through those processes like we have been for quite some time. The other, the other thing I want to mention to just keep an eye out because it's going to affect the entire region is the Tech Highland Valley is going through their environmental assessment process to sort of establish their end of mine life or, or what that's going to look like going forward. So currently we're, we're officially for Highland Valley, mine life is looking at 2028. But they're going through that process with government and to, to look at the viability of, of continuing operations further on. So just something to keep on the radar. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Smith. Director Rothenberger?
Anything to report really, Mr. Chair, because I assume you'll probably want to say something about the Pritchard meeting, which was quite successful. And I'll, I'll leave that to you. I mentioned a possible topic if it fits in somewhere. And that's the fact that even though we don't do roads, we frequently hear complaints and concerns from residents about road conditions. And we're put in the position of getting in touch with Argo and/or MOT on behalf of residents and trying to plead their case and find out what's going on at priorities and is the road going to be fixed or not. And it might be helpful at some point to have Argo and MOT talk to us about that and give us an overview possibly of, of, and, and other, other road maintenance contractors as appropriate. What, what were the priorities and how they deal with complaints? And when are certain areas going to be looked after and others not for a while? And is there a better way of channeling those concerns and complaints directly to the, the source? So that they are at least looked after because one of the problems is that people say is that they have trouble knowing who to contact and/or actually getting in contact to talk about their, their worries. Thanks.
I've encountered that many times. And I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, Director Rothenberger, that we have somebody from MOTI and, and such road maintenance companies as maybe contracted throughout the regional district. I don't think we have to make that in form of a motion. I will ask staff to look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Director Polderman has taken a call. So Director Elliott, what's happening?
What's happening? A lot of things are happening. We are building like there's no tomorrow. Tobiano's going up three houses at a time. Cherry Creek has got a new house on every vacant lot they could possibly find. They are putting up incredible sales that are going to raise our taxes considerably because of the amount of money that they're getting for. They're getting a million dollars basically for an old home on 20 acres. And new folks come along and they take and they make that one and a half acres that the house is on into a nice little parcel and leave the rest just to grow weeds or whatever. So Tobiano, I've tried to encourage some of the higher ups of the resort to take a look at becoming some kind of a municipality because they certainly don't fit within the TNRD bylaws anymore. And, and I've talked to Scott about it and he agrees. And it's an ongoing process with them, but we're hoping to get, for lack of a better term, rid of the kind of bylaws that are in place that pertain directly to the regional district. Otherwise, we're just humming along like usual. And we have not had the opportunity to do a fundraising. Other than that, I think everybody's pretty happy.
Thank you. Director Schaefer?
Housing sales in our area, in my area. Usually you put a house up for sale and in three days it's gone. And it's for a higher price than what they were asking because people are competing for it. The other thing is Ferry Road Park has been completed and we've been doing upgrades to parks. And the Vavenby Ice Arena has to be redone. So that's going to be looked at for, within the next year. That's about it.
Thanks. Director Blackwell?
Yeah, lots going on. Clearwater, new CAO. We threw him into a car that was going 60 miles an hour with everybody's baggage in it from before. So he's having a great time trying to get up to speed. We are two positions down in Public Works. And we're also looking to hire a one-year economic development officer position that will guide people through development process and build business processes, mostly around zoning and things like that. Because we have no houses, no house builders available and a massive housing shortage, which is affecting everything we do from hospitals to doctors and teachers and nurses. And Mayor, Director Roden and myself will be going into interior health at some higher level to try to fight to solve the problem of keeping our emergency wards open, which has been escalating week by week here. So seven kilometers of trails, community trails on the books, 20 seniors housing units about to start construction with the central community area for that. And about 35 things that I can't think of right now.
Thanks very much. Director Polderman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have been working on the funding to remove the toxic materials as we have a high percentage of uninsured people. So that's a bit of an issue. And hopefully we'll have an announcement on that within the next week. We've established potable water for the remaining residents. We've hired a person to deal with the permits. We have filled out our building bylaw. Working on moving our staff back to Litten. And of course, the number one issue is temporary housing. Hopefully, when we have a land issue resolved, then temporary housing going. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rice?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, to expand on Litten just a little bit to add to that. Of course, they don't have their landlines because the central office was burnt down. And so there are customers that are still, you know, without communication services down there that either don't have cell phone or don't have cell phone coverage. Of great concern to me is the community of Shaw Springs, which now has five families there. And they don't have cell coverage and they don't have landlines. And there was a medical emergency recently. So I don't know if we can get a satellite phone down there, but I am really concerned about that little pocket of people down there. Because there is, like I said, five families. It's sort of where some of the evacuees ended up being was a, a little place called Shaw Springs. And, but on the good news side, we got, we had an election with our improvement district and the two trustees that got elected. They are gung ho on getting our old school property up and running and getting, getting our grass back and all kinds of good things. And they got a wonderful idea. And between the two of them, believe it or not, they have lived in Spencer's Bridge for over 100 years. So they are longtime residents and they were not happy. And that's the only reason they ran for office. These two ladies, I don't think ever wanted to be politicians, but the greater good got to them. They put their names forward. We had a tie election and they drew one of the lady who is now the chair of the improvement district out of the hat for our election. And the rest is history. So I'm excited about the school grounds. And, and the other thing I'm excited about, I was contacted a few days ago by Melanie Berry from Tellus. And she's asked me to help with the rollout of fiber optics for all of Spencer's Bridge funded by Cooks Ferry, our indigenous community. And so we're going to have, and that's mid-November. So in a couple of weeks, we're going to be rolling out fiber optics in Spencer's Bridge. And I do believe that is a wonderful thing, not only for the community, but for our real estate market. Because I believe with that few customers and having fiber optics, we'll have some of the fastest internet in the world, possibly. We don't have very many residents. So anyways, that's the exciting news and stuff. And so our thanks to Cooks Ferry for putting that project forward and offering it to our community. That's it.
Thanks, Director Rice. Director Kershaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think in general, we've had a very good year. Our boat launch at Adam's Lake has been busy all summer. We did just have a meeting at Latremo Park in Little Fork for the transmission, Trans Mountain Community Legacy Funds for a park. And we had several families turn up with their young kids and everything else. And that's really something for Little Fort. There used to be no kids there for a while. The school was closed and everything else. So we're finally getting families back into, into Little Fort and had a very, very good meeting on their community park. They're excited. We're going to discuss it with slides the same as they have at Ferry Road, similar to that setup. And we'll be, open up their ballpark, we'll move the perimeter fence back. And it looks like the community of Little Fort is really going to start flourishing. And, and of course, our hall is really, really doing well. So it was a very good meeting. I'm excited about the future.
Thanks, Director Kershaw. Well, and thanks, Director Rothenberger, for leaving the Monte Creek Fire Hall news to me. Because I'm pretty excited about it. I guess you knew I was pretty excited about it. We had a donation of a, of an acre of property in an absolutely critical location. But it couldn't be a more perfect location adjacent to the Trans Canada Highway. And from there, Director Rothenberger and I were both pleased to hear that funding was becoming available from the Canada Community Building Fund for fire halls. So we have between the two of us, based roughly on the population that the new fire hall would serve, come up with a million dollars towards the, towards the cost of it. So with a donated acre and a million bucks, I think it's a fairly, fairly safe bet that this will go ahead. And to that end, we had a meeting in Pritchard about three weeks ago, I guess it was. And, and we asked the people who, who, all the people who would be affected by this, who would, who would, who would be eligible to receive the service, were invited to the meeting. We had a turnout of about 70 people. And, and at the end of the meeting, we had a vote as to whether or not they wished to have the TNRD continue to go down the, go down the road for the process of, of approving the, the project. I mean, probably be done by way of referendum. The vote was almost unanimous. There were two people who voted against it. One of whom, interestingly enough, is a former director of the Thompson Nicola Regional District, which I thought was a little bit peculiar. But you just never know what's going to happen. Anyway, I'm really excited about it. I'm pretty confident it's going to go ahead. And about the only other thing that I wanted to say was that this, this winter, I'm looking forward to working somehow with, with BC Wildfire to see if we can't get to the bottom of what went so tragically wrong this past summer. But we had a meeting yesterday with, and, and a representative was there. But there's only so much you can do in a, in a public meeting. And, and there's a lot that has to be said that nobody really wants to say in, in the course of a meeting like that. But as far as I'm concerned, as I said, it was, it was tragic what happened. And something must have been terribly amiss. I, I remember looking at the, at the BC Wildfire report. There were 16 fires of note in the Kamloops Fire Center, as they now call it, and 16 fires rated as out of control. So that's a pretty sad reflection on the effectiveness of our, of our firefighting as far as I'm concerned. And I do want to spend some time trying to get to the bottom of that and seeing if we can't have a better season, a better year next year regardless of the weather. Other than that, things seem to be okay in Area L. Monte Lake is trying to get their, you know, their people back housed and accommodated. And I think they're doing it, but it's, it's, I don't need to say much more about that because Mr. Polderman knows about it, Director Rice knows about it. It's tragic watching these things. And it's very, very difficult to get your feet back under you. One more comment, Director Rothenberger. I'm done.
Just a small correction, Mr. Chair. If I'm not mistaken, I believe we were allowed to have up to 50 people at that meeting. And that was the exact number that I counted.
Was that? Okay. I'm glad you're accounting. It was just a little bit of hyperbole there to make it sound a bit better. Okay, thanks. So that's it. I entertain a motion to adjourn.